All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need, when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, the Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community Television. New Fortune Chinese Restaurant, on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com, call them at 772-0838, and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com, call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave., call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solastoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.
To the Greenfield Town Council December 19th, 188th Regular Meeting, at the Greenfield High School Cafeteria. This meeting is being recorded, videotaped, and broadcast. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time. I know that there's GCTV, and anyone else? Oh, yep, and the recorder. And so the clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Sun?
Here.
Counselor Lobek?
Here.
Counselor Alice?
Present.
Counselor Pythrom?
Here.
Counselor Dolan?
Here.
Counselor Gilmore?
Here.
Counselor Wheeler?
Here.
Counselor Mayo?
Here.
Counselor Llinovich?
Here.
Counselor Mass?
Here.
President Renaud?
Here.
Vice President Ricketts?
Here.
Counselor Stempel?
Present.
Madam President, we have a quorum.
Thank you. And right now, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Cub Scouts PAC III. And if the Cub Scouts could please come up and lead us in the pledge. Sheila? We will do this in honor of the Cub Scouts PAC III.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the May 23 Town Council meeting? Good, the motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes. Could... Bill, could you please bring me the sign-in sheet? So this is the part of the meeting where we have public comment. We time you and ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. Also, that there are so many folks here... Well, it's okay, because not a ton have signed up to speak. Thank you, not many have signed... not as many have signed up to speak as I had expected. And so we'll keep you to the three minutes. And then afterwards, if folks still want to speak, would you say, though, if something has already been said, if you, you know, if you could withhold your comments because it's already been said. But we're going to start with Ann Mayo. And please, for the record, state your address and your town.
Hello. I'm Ann Mayo, 143 Wells Street. Good evening, councilors and fellow citizens. I'm here tonight to strongly support the new public library. My support is based on the following facts. The generous grant, if not used at this time, may be years before being repeated or successfully regained. The current library building is woefully, insultingly inadequate for those needing an accessible facility, an increasingly large number of our town. The vast, I say vast, majority of those attending the December 13th information session about the library, as well as over 1,300 residents see the Greenfield paper of December 15th, support a new library. Our other libraries in town, though wonderful, they do not substitute for a town's public library. They have different missions, collections, and services. A new library would be an economic boon to the town and could form a linchpin for a more successful downtown. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Rod Burrell.
Rod Burrell, Precinct 3, 424 Davis Street in Greenfield here. And if this runs over, just buzz me and I'll shut up. Like many of the people gathered here this evening, and at the meetings last week and over the last several months, I am very excited about the prospects for a new library in Greenfield, and aware of the many benefits that would accompany it. A more welcoming and functional workspace and study space for people of all ages, better accessibility, usability, and modern comforts than are possible with the current location, and as a focal point for fostering a positive and progressive community image for our town.
Rod, could you speak up into the mic a little bit?
Absolutely, all of it is much better. Indeed, I credit the amazing staff and volunteers of our current library for making that location work for as long and for as well as it has, despite its many shortcomings. And I also credit the many citizens of Greenfield who have mobilized for something they truly believe in and care deeply about. That being said, however, I remain extremely concerned with the very basic but very important question, how do we really pay for this, and can we really afford this? Well, realizing the unique opportunity afforded by achieving the long sought $9.4 million grant from the Commonwealth, we as a town are still left with the prospects of covering between $8 to $10 million of the remaining costs associated with this single project. And this, of course, does not include the still unknown additional millions of dollars that Greenfield will have to come up with to pay for, at the very least, a brand-new fire station, and at the very most, a far more costly public safety complex. Altogether, the potential costs of the combined projects are significant, and come at a time that the town continues to grapple with budgeting issues across the board. From constantly struggling to meet annually rising school budget requirements, from constant... pardon me, funding a health department charged with ensuring nothing less than the public safety, to properly equipping and staffing the very fire department that is so closely tied to this project. Additionally, the aging infrastructure of many of our most basic necessities, such as roads, sidewalks, the wastewater treatment plant, and the water and sewer networks, virtually guarantee ever-increasing financial challenges ahead. Historically, and as everybody on the council well knows, it's the taxpayers at any level, federal, state, and local, that have been counted upon to help fund most capital improvement projects, and it is no different here in Greenfield. What is different here, however, is the extreme burden already placed every day on residents by the consistently high property taxes. Out of 351 communities in Massachusetts, Greenfield currently ranks seventh, at 2243 per thousand evaluation, well above the state average of 1510. As the seat of the Commonwealth's lowest-income county, that simply means that a larger percentage of our incomes go to local property tax than almost anywhere else in Massachusetts, and this has been true for over a generation now. This fact, combined with several recent, worthy, but expensive projects, the new high school that we're sitting in today, community senior center, and the parking garage among them, have only added to this already-high burden. Economic studies have shown that overly-high property taxes limit-
Rod?
Yes.
I'm sorry, that's-
Three minutes?
Yeah. So if you could just wrap it up?
Basically, I'm not against the library. I recognize and appreciate the need for it. But if we're to do this, I think it incumbent upon the council and all of our elected officials and all the citizens of Greenfield to make sure that we have looked at every possible fundraising option, every possible grant option, following the local businesses, following the footsteps of Mr.'s Federal Gilmore, for example, and make sure that we know the exact costs of everything that is being proposed before us this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia Clifford.
Hello, everybody. My name is Cynthia Clifford, I live at 23 Franklin Street in Greenfield.
Cynthia, if you could just put the mic a little bit closer to your mouth.
Thank you. Okay, better. I'm asking my city councilor Sheila Gilmore and all the other councilors to support their constituents who have mostly told you that they want a new library. They're in favor of a new Greenfield Public Library building. I see so many people here tonight that I saw at the meeting the other night, and they understand the need and value for a new, modern, and accessible library, a library that people of all walks of life can get into, can enjoy, can learn, and have a community. All of you who are required from... I'm sorry. All of you who are requesting from our city councilors, who have trusted, who we have trusted and elected to represent us, we have asked you to please represent what your town wants. Can you please stand up? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Cynthia. Steve Adams?
That's Adam without the S, so the recorder gets it straight.
Apologize about that.
I'm here to speak about supporting the Board of Health budget in the amount of $18,830. When I came before the city council back in October, I gave you each a chart, and I said that numbers don't lie. There's no chart tonight, no Merry Christmas, sorry, but the numbers still don't lie. Zero is the number of health inspectors. Three is the number of health-related outbreaks in Massachusetts since September. The first was an outbreak of the acute hepatitis A, which killed one person and affected 65 residents. The second, which is still under investigation, is acute flaccid melitis, which can cause polio-like symptoms, including paralysis, and affects mostly children. So far, Massachusetts has two confirmed cases with four more under investigation. This is a national outbreak. The third is a stomach virus outbreak in the retirement community, which resulted in closing the community's dining room. My point is, with no health inspectors, Greenfield is unable to respond to any health-related outbreaks. And if you're saying to yourself, "This won't happen in Greenfield," let me remind you, we had one last year. Former health director Nicole Zapko, with a full complement of health inspectors, dealt with it efficiently and expeditiously, which is why you never heard about it in the press. Some other numbers. Nineteen. We have nineteen new complaints logged at the Health Department with no action being taken. Nine is the number of requests for inspections in the Health Department with no ability to act. One hundred and forty-two is the number of food establishments that are overdue for inspection by the Greenfield Health Department. That's a big number. So let me break that down for you. One bakery, seven bars, two bed and breakfasts, one caterer, four churches, five convenience stores, six food services, twenty kitchens, one milk pasteurization plant. Yes, we have milk pasteurization going on in Greenfield. Three pantries, eight processing centers, forty-two restaurants, thirty-six retailers, and last, but by all means, not the least, six school kitchens, including the kitchen in this very building. All of Greenfield's public schools. You can see that with no health inspections, all of Greenfield is put at risk. We have no defense should a foodborne outbreak occur, in terms of both our health and well-being, but also from a legal perspective. If someone were to fall ill, they could sue the city for damages, and if they were to win their case, it would cost all of Greenfield's taxpayers. So I begged the city council to restore full funding to the Health Department from stabilization, and I begged the mayor to hire health inspectors. And councilors, if the mayor doesn't hire health inspectors, the monies you approve will revert to the general fund, and then can be moved to stabilization. So where's the risk? Thank you.
Erin Donnelly Drake?
Erin Donnelly Drake, 245 Conway Street, which is Precinct 3. I'm here to urge you to vote yes for the new library. I want to talk briefly about the fact that two of our elementary schools do not have a librarian. One of those does not have a dedicated library space, and therefore, our youngest kids, and what I would say is some of our most economically disadvantaged kids in town, are not getting adequate library services from their schools. Counselor Sund, the most economically disadvantaged students in your district, their homeschool is Federal Street School, no librarian. Counselor Alice, your homeschools are Federal Street and Newton School, no librarians, and Newton School does not have a dedicated library space. Counselor Pythrom, Federal Street School is your district's homeschool, no librarian. Llinovich, Newton School is your student's homeschool, no librarian, no dedicated library space. I should mention also, I don't know as much about the middle school, no librarian. These students are getting very few services in terms of the library. Therefore, it is more incumbent on our public library to provide these services to our students. And I have no confidence that you're going to fund the schools to get these librarians, to get dedicated library spaces. We have them... we have an opportunity here to provide library services to our children of Greenfield, and I urge you to vote yes. I also urge you to vote for the... or to support the health inspectors, the health program here in Greenfield, and I also urge you to think differently in your mind about operating expenses versus capital expenses. I think there's a lot of conflating the two. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica O'Neil?
Can you hear me? Okay. So Jessica O'Neil, 39 Mountain Road, Charlemont. So I'm here to talk on behalf of Just Roots and the Greenfield Community Farm. I have two things I want to update you on. One is really exciting. It's about our scientific research study that some of you may be aware of and some of you might not, but we've just wrapped up two years of data collection on a scientific research study that we're conducting in partnership with the Community Health Center and Dr. Berkowitz, who's out of UNC. And that health study is focused on looking at the CSA farm share model as a health intervention model, and we decided to put our money where our mouth was and actually researched this. And so we've been collecting data for two years. We've just wrapped up that data collection, and we've sent off all the data to Dr. Berkowitz, who will be taking a look at it. We'll have early findings in the beginning of the year, in 2019, that is, and we'll be using the year of 2019 to be disseminating the findings of the study broadly, certainly in Massachusetts, but also outside of our state. And in using the information that we find to influence our health insurers to play a really robust role in funding wellness benefits for healthy food through CSA benefits, funded wellness benefits. And so that's really exciting work. It's starting here in Greenfield. We're doing it through the Greenfield Community Farm on town land, and we're really proud of that work, so we'll be updating you when we know more. And the second point is something of business that you'll have later today in the meeting, which is, we're requesting a cash match of $25,000. That's part of a large grant that we have been awarded in partnership with the Community Health Center of Franklin County, the Franklin County Community Development Corporation, and our low-income housing partners here in Greenfield. So together, the four of us will be partnering on a project called mainstreaming food access into health and housing programs here in Greenfield. And what that project does is essentially take some successful programming that we've been doing and work with our partners in health and housing to address some of the barriers associated with the lack of access to fresh food and health services. So we'll be bringing a mobile market in, taking essentially the farm into our low-income communities, both where they live and where they receive healthcare services. We'll be combining health screenings and health education with our food distribution, and that'll be happening over the next three years. In addition to the things I mentioned, we'll be increasing aggregation of local food through the CDC, that we can offer more frozen foods to more residents here in Greenfield, but also to our local institutions, particularly the schools. So that's also really exciting work, and I want to thank you for your consideration of the $25,000. That money would be particularly used for renovations and improvements to the barn that's on the land that we lease over at the old town port farm, the Greenfield Community Farm, and that is a town asset which we're really excited to reinvest in. The grant is a $750,000 grant over three years. Half of that is cash from the USDA, and half of it, we need to find the match for, so that's cash and in-kind. So we're eager to hear what you decide, but we're hoping that you'll decide yes on that $25,000 match, so that we can reinvest in our asset here in town and build health for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Liv Christensen?
My name is Liv Christensen. I am eight years old, and I live on 59 Cleveland Street, Greenfield, Mass. And I want a new library because I want some more space to read, and I'd like more space for programs. Thank you for your time.
Pete Brown?
So that's a little hard to follow. Thanks, Liv. My name is Pete Brown, I live at 24 James Street here in Greenfield. I've been thinking a lot about the very brave person who got up at the end of the public meeting last week to ask why we should spend about $10 million when there are so many other problems to be fixed here in Greenfield. I've been thinking about it because it's a question I hadn't been fully able to answer for myself. We've got people who can't find jobs, can't find a place to live, who are struggling with addiction. We don't even have health inspectors now. Those are a lot of threads. How do we decide to start pulling at one instead of another? Then I started thinking about the fact that hundreds of people showed up at an hours-long meeting on a weeknight to talk about why they love the library and want to see it grow. Usually, the only way we get even close to that many people to show up to these things is when they're pissed off about something. But people love the library, and I think the reason they love the library is that it is maybe the perfect example of a public good. Maybe not everyone believes in the public good, but I do, and I think you should too. Because the public good is why we all come together like this, instead of each going off on our own. The public good is how we start pulling at all the threads. There are always going to be folks who tell us why we can't do this, or we can't do that, the sour pussies who show up in the comments for every Recorder article about any idea for making downtown a little better. Yes, we need to figure out how to find people homes and jobs, and make sure they have enough to eat, but we also need to let people imagine, and let them dream, and let them grow their ideas. That is what the library is about, and that's what public good is about. That is why I hope you vote yes tonight. And if you vote no, I'm not really sure why we do this all. Thanks.
Fern Smith?
Hi. All right. First, I want to thank you guys all for all the work that you do at... is that a louder? Is it on? Okay. I want to thank you guys for all the work that you do every month. You sit here, you listen to us, and I thank you. Secondly, please vote to fully fund the Health Department. Lastly, I want to talk to you about the library and the fire station. Please recognize that each person here speaking tonight is also in favor of building a new, bigger, and better fire station for our firefighters. We believe we can do both of these things. As for the library, I'd like to talk about the economics of it. Regional economists, economic... I can't say economist. Talk about the potential economic impact of adding and taking something away from a region. They measure the impact as a multiplier. You can have job multipliers, which is how many jobs are created, and then you can have dollar multipliers, which is how many times an invested dollar calculates or circulates around the economy. The job multipliers, in this case, would come from the jobs created from building the library, and this is good temporarily for our local economy. But more is... I'm sorry, but more interestingly and more importantly is just the dollar multiplier. About 10 or 15 years ago, South Carolina did a study on the economic impact of the community libraries, and found that the multiply... sorry, and found that multiplier effects were $4.48. So that means that every dollar spent, it cycled around the regional economy and resulted in $4.48 of spending. This is shopping locally at its best. The takeaway from all of this is that libraries have been shown to have a large positive economic impact on communities. As was discussed in the wonderful presentation done by the library director, the project manager, and the architect of the building of the new library, will multiply the library users by twenty... or 200 to 240 percent. That means foot traffic downtown would increase or multiply as well. All of this says that libraries have shown to have the large positive economic impact on communities. By investing in the new library, you're investing in all of Greenfield. Please vote yes.
Gina Campbell? Please don't forget to say your address. We got it. 24 Vernon Street. Precinct 3.
Is this close enough? Perfect. Good evening, my name is Gina Campbell. I live at 86 Highland Avenue. I'm here for two reasons this evening. The first is a parent. I'm in full support of a new library. My family has spent many dedicated days in the library with our children who grew up in the library. For many years, I can name every librarian, and it builds a sense of community that we need, and I ask you to think about the future of Greenfield, not just now. The new library is a place where we need to go. The new library is a place where we need to go. And then I speak as a registered nurse who's worked in this healthcare community for 25 years. I have a unique window that nobody in this room knows of what it's like to work with the Health Department. For many, many years, leading quality and infection control at the hospital, there are stories I can't tell and can't share of our work with the Health Department, and having no Health Department is absolutely a crime. We need a Health Department. It needs to be funded. I understand that it might take some time to bring it back to where it once was, but there is absolutely a need for a Health Department in this size. Thank you very much.
Janina Thayer?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Janina Thayer. I live at 52 Forest Avenue, Precinct 4. Thank you for your time. I'm going to read an email that I sent to a counselor, a Pyfrom, earlier today. I didn't think to send it to all of you, but I wanted everyone here to hear it as well. I don't often weigh in on issues being addressed by the city councilors because we elected you all to run the city along with the mayor. However, I feel the politics has superseded common good as related to the Health Department fiasco. Please reinstate the monies to the Health Department. Without this very vital department, the whole town is suffering. There are no longer any fees coming to the town from the health inspections. They are behind, and they are no longer being done. And those monies go into the general fund, if I'm not mistaken. New businesses are no longer able to open because of lack of health inspection. There is no oversight of food restaurants, so standards may not be followed as when there is oversight. Some people may not choose to eat in our food establishments due to the lack of health inspections, thereby creating a serious economic situation for our food establishments. How about all the festivals that are vital to our community and our enjoyment and our economy? There has to be a health inspector before they can even operate. What happens if there is a health outbreak or health issue at a school, nursing home? Who would manage this with the knowledge needed to speed the investigation and recovery process? We would have a really sick town. This is unacceptable to all of Greenfield residents. I would also recommend a provision in the vote to fully fund the Health Department in the coming year to prevent this horrible situation from happening again and to demonstrate to the new health inspector applicants that the town supports the Health Department. Please remember, some of you do, some of you don't, that I was on the Board of Health for 20 years and saw firsthand how busy and how vital these services are. This was also when the Health Department was fully funded and appreciated for its services to our residents. The second quick point I want to make is I also want to voice my full support for the proposed new library. I attended last week's open forum and fully understand the financial implications for future tax burden. I am retired and on a fixed income, as many others supporting the library are. However, if we don't support this now, the money's now available, we'll go to another town, and we will probably not get another opportunity to get much-needed library in my lifetime. So please vote yes for the town of Greenfield, for the Health Department, and the library. Thank you very much.
Joanna Whitney?
You guys move the table forward. Joanna Whitney, 112 Franklin Street. I missed the last public meeting due to my back injury. Thank you for the chance to speak tonight. When I go to the library, it wears on me that I am restricted to a shabby back entrance. I recently asked Ellen Boyer and Lisa Pearlman about the challenges other patrons with limited mobility face. Ellen described something a few weeks ago when she entered through the back door at the same time as a man using a wheelchair. He was new to the library and asked where the elevator was. She showed him, but his wheelchair was too big to fit in it. Another patron calls ahead for her materials. She comes to the basement, calls the circulation desk, and then she waits for someone to bring her items down to her. Lisa told me that people have difficulty getting into the building because of the elevator, the steep ramps, patches of ice in the winter, or loose gravel that erodes out of the adjacent slope after rainstorms. She mentioned a woman who can no longer bring her son to his library because she can't get his wheelchair upstairs. Libraries are important social spaces where people in a community meet, share interests, and come to know each other. This opportunity is denied to some of our neighbors, not because they don't want to go to the library, but because using this building is so difficult or impossible. Imagine how that man felt discovering that he can't use our library because his wheelchair doesn't fit in the elevator. Imagine how that young boy feels now that he is also excluded. I go to the library to run my workshop. I rarely attend other programs. I avoid using the stacks. There is no room in our current library to make all of the aisles and the elevator wide enough for people with mobility issues to move freely and safely. Losing your ability to walk should not mean you don't feel welcome in our library. Everyone should be able to get in beyond the basement. I urge you to vote for a new library, one that all members of our community can enter with dignity through the front door. Thank you.
That's everybody who signed up for public comment. We have a large meeting ahead of us with a lot of items on the agenda. If there's something that somebody, something that needs to be said that hasn't already said, of course, we'll hear you, but if not, we will just move on with our meeting. Is there anybody else? Maria?
Maria Burge, 29 Garfield Street. I just wanted to point out something about the Health Department. I work in the court system and in the housing court. And an inspector is always there at least a day and a half. That's a day and a half of the hours spent to work spent in court. So I'm here in total support of the full funding. Stop dragging our feet. Stop blaming each other. Fund the Health Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Okay, moving on. Counselor Stempel, we have a public hearing and a second reading.
I'd be so happy. Public hearing. In accordance with Home Rule Charter, the Greenfield Town Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, December 19th, 2018, at 7:00 PM at Greenfield High School Cafeteria, 21 Bar Avenue to receive public input on the following. $25,000 be appropriated from Fund 1610, sale of town-owned land to provide matching funds for the grant for Just Roots. The following sums be appropriated from the contractual stabilization fund to fund retroactive provisions of contract agreements. SSEA up to $40,000. Clerical up to $26,000. Contractual stabilization balance $196,100. Upon recommendation of the mayor, that the sum of $19,541,296 be appropriated for the construction of a new public library. And to meet said appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is hereby authorized to borrow said sum of $19,541,296 pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, subsection, Article 3, or any other enabling statute. And the mayor is hereby authorized to apply for or contract for, accept, and expend any federal and/or state grants available for this project to be used to reduce, excuse me, within appropriation. And further, the mayor is authorized to take any action necessary to carry out the intent and purpose of these projects. Upon recommendation of the mayor, that the council authorizes the payment FY18 bills for $1,546.82 from the FY19 Energy Department budget. Ever Source, $263.14. Ever Source, $1,283.68. The Town Council will consider the same on Wednesday, December 19th, 2018, at 7:00 PM at Greenfield High School Cafeteria, 21 Bar Avenue. Materials can be obtained from the Town Clerk's Office, 14 Court Square, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, or by phone, 413-772-1555, extension 6163. Karen Renaud, Greenfield Town Council President.
Public hearing is hereby opened at 7:45. And could you please read the second reading, Counselor Stempel?
I'm thrilled to. Thank you so much. Town Council Second Reading, December 19th, 2018. $25,000 be appropriated from Fund 1610, sale of town-owned land to provide matching funds for the grant for Just Roots. The following sums be appropriated from the contractual stabilization fund to fund retroactive provisions of contract agreements. SSEA up to $40,000. Clerical up to $26,000. Contractual stabilization balance $196,100. Upon recommendation of the mayor, that the sum of $19,541,296 be appropriated for the construction of a new public library. And to meet said appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is hereby authorized to borrow said sum of $19,541,296 pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, Article 3, or any other enabling statute. And the mayor is hereby authorized to apply for or contract for, accept, and expend any federal and/or state grants available for this project to be used to reduce the within appropriation. And further, the mayor is authorized to take any action necessary to carry out the intent and purpose of these projects. Upon recommendation of the mayor, that the council authorizes the payment of FY18 bills for $1,546.82 from the FY19 Energy Department budget. Ever Source, $263.14. Ever Source, $1,283.68.
Thank you, Counselor Stempel. And now we'll have communications from the mayor, town officers, and employees.
Good evening, Madam President, councilors. A quick note on the 2019 tax rate. I want to congratulate and recognize the finance team led by Liz Gilman to put together all the documentation necessary, working with the Treasurers Department and the assessors, RRG, and Kim Mu to submit the documents to the Department of Revenue, and we have received certification of our tax rate. The tax rate is 22.36. It is down by seven cents. The documentation has all been accepted so that we can not only review the documentation submitted, but guarantee that Department of Revenue has accepted all of our numbers. My first, I'm going to make a couple of comments on the agenda. My first comment is on the Health Department, and Mark will address the revamping and the proposal for this evening. During the FY19 budget process, the council cut $52,000 from that department. Previous years were around $182,000, $181,000. The $52,000 was cut from wages, resulting in a budget of $144,000, approximately $38,000 from the previous years of funding. Essentially, the department was funded for nine and a half months and accused of wasting time on enforcing regulations and laws. The insult resulted in staff seeking municipal positions outside of Greenfield and/or resigning due to work overload. As you've heard from many, particularly the Chair of the Board of Health, Steve Adam, that's without an S, and the former Chair of the Board of Health, Janina Thayer. The situation is ridiculous. We have advertised, we have interviewed. Inspectors don't want to come to Greenfield. They don't trust Greenfield. They find it dangerous, insulting, and without any job security. We have an excellent candidate that is reforming or reconsidering our interview and is interested in what the Town Council does tonight. The pittance that Mark Smith will show you that will get us through the next six months has to be considered in the next 2020 budget year to involve certified, credentialed health director, and I prefer one additional health inspector to handle the business of Greenfield. I really wish that you would take a serious look at this and look at the future of that department. You also have on here Melanson Heath, authorization to have them complete the retirement department. During the discussion, during the audit time, and the council agreeing to go with Bloom Shapiro, another auditing firm, it was stated that the retirement department was nearly finished and had to be completed by December 31st. That is still the case. And by not having Melanson Heath authorized to do so, we initiated a conversation with the President of the Council, another counselor, and the Finance Director for the city to try to get this particular problem resolved. There are two other entities that depend on this audit. It's a federal audit, and the other agencies, the Greenfield Housing Authority and the Franklin County Technical School, are involved in that. And Liz can help you with any, if you have any questions on further with that particular vote this evening. For you, basically, this is, and we had a brief conversation at the Ways and Means, but this is an opportunity to take the violations and enforcement actions of inspection departments that are, result in fines and that are not paid, and to allow an appeal process and then an explanation, a decision, and either do away, delete, or eliminate the offense, or to apply it to as a lien on real estate. It's common across the Commonwealth. The big vote is the library. We all know that. People want it. I can't imagine any counselor not receiving dozens of calls supporting this. I've supported it for years. We've been planning for it for years. We've been, had our vision and our debt schedule projected through 2030 for several years. We've been, had our vision and our debt schedule projected through 2030 for several years. I had come across a letter someone sent me from the President of the Council in 1996. He wrote a support letter for the library, Mr. Eric Green, and said that it was critically needed for our community to have a new library and to please support the application for 3.2 million dollars. We know inflation kicks in here and there, but what we also know is that a bad decision one day can cost you a lot of money on another day. Today, we're here, a little over 20 years, we're looking for 20 million to build a library. Just think about that. How much have we lost in between by failing to have the courage to vote for a new library? And there are other questions involved, and I'll get to some of them. But the point I'm trying to make is that this library, at 20 million dollars, nineteen point five, presented to you at nineteen point five, presented to me at 21 and change, has a reduction with it. So just to be guaranteed, our discussion this evening from me, because I've been accused by some councilors as to having no confidence, maybe by all the councilors, as having no confidence in me, and by some councilors as not accepting what I say as part of the city finances. So we spoke with the general, we spoke with our bond council. You can't get any higher than that with debt for the green, for the city of Greenfield. We spoke with the lead attorney of the Department of Revenue. The lead attorney said, what are you building, a skyscraper? We haven't heard of any community going beyond the debt ceiling. And then when we spoke with the council, he explained the number of interpretive regulations of the law and stated that you're not even near your debt ceiling. So having thought that this library project and the fire department would put us over the debt ceiling is just not true. And we can explain in detail. The actual tax rate and tax impact is no different than our annual budget. The debt line item for paying off the bonds and the paying on the operating expense of the library is all in the operating budget. The operating budget is governed by a law, Proposition 2 and 1/2. You can't go above 2 and 1/2 unless you have an override. Nobody wants an override. I've never proposed one. The idea of going beyond 2 and 1/2 is just not there. So we can have a controlled budget process between now and the next 25, 30 years that's going to include payment for the library. For instance, our first payment, I believe, is in 2025 or 2026. It's going to be the largest payment we ever make, because every payment after that is less. If we save 350,000 dollars between now until '25 or '26, we'll have that first payment made. How do we save 350,000 dollars? Well, we, there are two ways to save money. One is to make more, and one is to spend less. So to come up with a 350,000 dollar net over a period of years, the, you would have to devise a plan for increased revenues. Do we have any plan for increased revenue besides the taxpayer? Of course we have. We always have. Since I've been mayor, we've developed a number of different revenue centers. So what are the new revenue centers we're going to deal with now? Well, we have marijuana entities, marijuana dispensaries, marijuana cultivation. We have, I think it's one approved and five in the pipeline in Greenfield. Different sites, retail, cultivation, dispensaries, medical, those are going to develop revenue. There's a, without getting into the details, there's roughly 3% that's a state law for the payment back to the cities and towns collected by DOR and community host agreements that have been calculated to be worth a minimum of 75,000 per agreement. So if you had five, we've just bumped into close to our 350,000 needed. The council has the ability with the approval of the mayor to dedicate funds. And I'd be interested in speaking, and the President and I had had a brief conversation on that, interested in speaking about dedicated funds for new revenues. I think that's a perfect opportunity to dedicate some of the portion of debt to new revenues. There are other ways that we're going to save some money, and I've been mocked a bit by comparing the development and economic development as expanding the tax base. Well, that's exactly what it is. When you have economic development, you expand the tax base. So expanding the tax base means that the property that is being developed is over and above what was previously assessed. So when you have a property like the Lunt Development, the Lunt property that the town owns and is looking forward to sell in March or April, well, you have a beginning of 2.3 million dollars as total assessed value for 11 acres, and then we, as a city, take six and a half acres and use it for ball fields, and then the other five and a half acres becomes a multimillion-dollar investment for a developer, which is what happening, is happening now, that's going to increase and expand the tax base. So that 2.3 million dollars is now approaching 6 million dollars, that's nearly triple, and by the time they're done, it could quadruple the tax base just on that five and a half acres. What about the Roadway Inn or Quality Inn or the old Howard Johnson's Motor Inn? That has an assessed value. It's going to be demolished. It's going to be new construction in the 14 million dollar development area. That's expanding the tax base. Why? Because the new building and construction is greater than the existing one that was assessed prior to demolition. That's expanding the tax base. And there's a little ripple effect there, too. The last hotel, this is only a 90-room hotel, the last hotel was 100 rooms. So you say, geez, we're getting fewer rooms. Well, in fact, one of the wings, half the hotel, was condemned for a number of years. So we lost lodging revenue from that section. And then the remaining half was probably 30 to 50% occupancy, so we lost revenue there again. I would expect that the new owners, who are investing millions and millions of dollars, are going to have a hotel there that's going to draw from a national database, and we're going to have a high occupancy, and we're going to have much more, probably, my guess is between 25 and 75% increase in lodging revenue over the last year. Those are new revenues, some of it bringing back to what we had several years ago when all of the, that hotel was working. And lastly, we've had informal talks, and I'll make it somewhat formal at this point. There are efficiencies in our operating budget that are worth hundreds of thousands of dollars. And those are utility savings, and we'll be close to another solar farm hopefully in 2019. It's also having to do with dispatch. We are aggressively working with the state to regionalize. We have the typical frowns from some of the councilors, but that's a reality, that we need to regionalize a number of different areas, but they're not probably going to be in our building anymore. And that's fine, because a regionalized dispatch is more important than having them as a tenant in the City of Greenfield Municipal Building. That's going to save money. Why? Because if you use that particular department, which is about 800,000 dollars, and you take that 800,000 dollars out, but you leave that block there, I'm sorry, you take the department out and you leave the block there, that's 850 or 823,000 dollars from last year's calculations to be used in other parts of the budget. It can go to line items and debt, police, DPW, wherever. That's all left up to the mayor and the budget team of the council. Lastly, I just want to note that we've had a controlled budget over time. My first budget was 39.9 million. Does anyone know FY19's budget? Right, so I'm sure you all know this year's budget that you worked on, and you know that it hasn't increased much in the past nine years. And did you know also during that time, since I've been mayor, we've taken rescissions, allocations approved by the council, projects and initiatives and ideas we brought to the council, and had the council put their input in and approve and allocate the money? And all of that money has gone for those projects. And over those years, we have brought back the money unspent. That unspent amount? 70 million dollars. We bought back for rescission after the council had approved. Those are big numbers. And those numbers represent what the leverage we use as a city to get on projects. When we did the high school, the rescission was about 45 million dollars, because we got 80% reimbursement on a 66 million dollar project. When we did the parking garage, it was a 75% reimbursement. So we're going to be returning 7 and 1/2 million dollars of approved debt by the council next March, end of the first quarter. In addition, there are other projects that we have turned back money on. But if you think of the rescission amount, it doesn't have that big an impact on debt or on the operating budget, but it's the trust that should come from the council, and it's the trust that should come from the residents. When they see the project that's up, on schedule, under budget, then those are the type of projects, plus they're funded from state tax money, which is our tax money, then those are the type of projects we must always approve, because we can't do it in the future, as Eric Green would, if he was here today, I wish he was, if he was here today, he might say, geez, you know, I supported that library in 1996 for 3.2 million. Using some of these councilors' suggestions, we could pay almost cash for it today if it was 3.2 million. But we didn't make a courageous decision by the council in 1996. The councilors today need to identify the courage of themselves and then identify the need. And then I would also suggest that Councilors Alice and Brickett, Brickett, Alice, and Counselor Mas, they should reconsider their staunch no stance, listen to some of the people that have spoken, listen to the residents of Greenfield, and understand that even though our value is 186,000 dollars now for our average home, single-family home in Greenfield, half the people are under it, half the people are over it. And that means if you have a higher valuation, the higher valuation, higher income people are paying a number of dollars more than the ones who have a lower valuation. And that is helping some of the lower-income people in town. And if you happen to have a house half of 186, 93,000 dollars, you might be paying a dollar and a quarter a week for the new library. I know I went on longer than I, my three minutes. But we have documentation to explain that our debt ceiling is nowhere near of being threatened. Our income and revenues are only trending up, and the, as evidenced by the most recent tax rate approval and certification by Department of Revenue, our tax rate is going down. And my last comment will be that even though we might be number seven in the state for a tax rate, that is only a reflection of evaluation. So if you make your community stronger, wealthier, more interesting and attractive, your valuations are going to continue to go up. This year, they went up 6 to 7%. So I think we should look very closely at the opportunity to continue with the same strategies we've been using for economic development and taking a bit of a risk, knowing that we can pay our own bills. I'll take any questions.
Counselor Stempel?
That's one of the best ones I've ever heard, Mayor, so thank you. I was going to pivot a little bit and ask a little bit more about that. I'm so excited about this new hotel. Tell us more about it. I have a, I heard that the developer is also, is he the same developer as the Hadley Meeting House on Route 9, or is that a different person?
No, it's the same person and same family. And they have a couple other hotels, two in Hadley and one in Springfield.
I just know they have a great reputation, and I'm so happy. So this developer shows Greenfield because they have a vision in our town, and so that makes me wildly excited, because their vision for Greenfield matches my own. If you could tell us a little bit about the project, I don't, when I work from home, I don't leave home, except to come to these awesome meetings. So I haven't been around the rotary, so I know the heavy machinery is there, and the permit was approved. Can you tell us more about the project from here on out?
Yes, they purchased, they purchased the Roadway Inn from the owners, previous owners, and purchased some land next to the Roadway Inn, formerly owned by F.W. Schmidt. They also have received special permit and approvals from the zoning board, planning board recently, and actually, two weeks ago, that's why they haven't done anything yet, but they're in the process of demolition. It's going to be a 90-room hotel. He's, we're hoping it's a Marriott, he's been working with the Marriott chain. It's not my place to say what label is on that hotel. There's an additional 8,000 square feet of retail space. It's going to include a bank and Dunkin' Donuts. The Dunkin' Donuts that's on the corner near Newton Street will be moving up the street. Mass Department of Transportation has approved the structure plans for traffic. The 14 million dollar hotel is quite larger than the assessed value for the Roadway Inn. There's going to be several dozen, I don't have the exact number of new jobs available. And they have a national data system for reservations, so it's, it's, you know, expected to be highly occupied. Just one more thing, the developer was in Greenfield several years ago, and he spent some time looking for, working with Wilsons for a boutique hotel in downtown. And we spent a lot of time working on that. It was economically feasible, so if there's another developer out there who wants to work with Wilsons, it's still feasible. But once we couldn't get the extra tax credits for that project, he still wanted to be in Greenfield, and we kept looking and looking, unfortunately. Unfortunately, we had one motel that was deteriorating rapidly, but that was a good spot.
Counselor Mayo?
Mayor, I'm not sure if this question is...
Microphone, Counselor Mayo.
I'm not sure if you're going to be able to, or you're going to point it to Liz, but you identified utility savings as a method of gaining resource. Can you elaborate as to how that's going to take place, or give us a more apt description of that?
Sure, so Carol Collin is our Director of Energy and Sustainability. She's very aggressive when it comes to looking for projects, grants, and incentives from the utility companies. So we have spent over the year, we've never had an application rejected from DOR since we were the, one of the first solar farms in Massachusetts. We have been working on a solar project at Millbrook Well for several years. The last year and a half, 18 months or so, the Department of Energy Resources has been revamping the solar regulations and laws. So everything's been put on pause. They had their bidding two weeks ago, and our project was put into the first, put into the blocks, and we don't know if we're in the first, or second, or third block. We'll find out shortly, before the end of December. But the developer who responded to our RFP three years ago now has already come up with the introduction fee, which was in the vicinity of 500 or 600,000 dollars. So we have that electricity that's going to be built from Millbrook Well, and that will reduce our costs. We will not be subject to increased kilowatt charges in the future, very similar to our Greenfield Light and Power, where we buy electricity for everyone in Greenfield, and it's a fixed price for the next two years.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Presently, we're saving about between 280,000 and 330,000 a year on our electricity with the solar landfill on the dump.
Thank you.
Or the landfill.
Counselor Mas?
Thank you, Mayor. And I, at the chair's meeting, highlighted two issues that I was going to raise with you tonight, and I just wanted to hit them again. The governor has offered a municipal vulnerabilities program that allows municipalities to address the effects of climate change and to prepare for them. A third of the communities in the Commonwealth, as well as a third of the communities in Franklin County, have applied. We're in our third round of funding for that planning process. Some of our neighboring communities are getting implementation funds for actual projects based on that. Can you tell me when Greenfield might apply for municipal MVP planning funds so that we can start down that pipeline for future funding for other projects?
Right, we've been there from the beginning. Chief Strand and Eric Twalrog, our planner, have been involved in that process. There's nothing new to report. The Wiley-Russell Dam is one of the areas in which there's a climate resiliency type of connection, and we were considering that. We have a million dollars set aside earmarked for the construction of the Wiley-Russell Dam, and we'll be working on that during the months of January through March.
Quick follow-up to that question. Mayor, maybe I'm confused, maybe I don't have the correct information. I don't show Greenfield as one of the communities who's actually done this MVP programming, planning process, which is a prerequisite to accessing these particular funds. Those might be good projects for this, but I think we actually have to apply to the planning process even to be eligible. Could you look into that and get us an answer if we have done that process? If we have, I know it involves some community involvement, and I didn't hear about those planning meetings.
I'll pass that on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And the second question I had for you at Chairs is, a year ago this month, this council approved a tax increment financing agreement for a property on Bank Row that was premised on the idea that four or more jobs would be added to the wage base through nonprofits on the fourth floor of that building that was to be occupied by the District Attorney's Office, which were moved jobs. My understanding is that that top, that top portion was never constructed. You did indicate to me at the Chairs meeting that that project hasn't gone to certification yet. What do we need to do for the council to rescind its approval for that TIF application? Can we do that? And will it go to certification if those, that top floor isn't completed?
Yeah, we have a TIF meeting coming up, I think it's next week, is it, Dan?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow? So, and we have a TIF meeting coming up tomorrow. That will be raised. If there, if there's been no certification or acceptance by ECAC, then it doesn't go any further, and we can withdraw.
Councillor Sund?
Yes, you were talking about retail. We got two outstanding stores in Greenfield clothing-wise, the Outlet and Wilsons. Is there any other clothing stores that are looking to come into the town of Greenfield and want to come into Greenfield?
Not that I know of, councillor.
Okay, I just wondered if you could work on that if possible.
That's not my job. I do need a couple shirts, though.
Councillor Pyfrum?
Hello, Mayor. I had the opportunity to watch the video from last week's meeting, and I heard a gentleman talk about economic downward spiral. There's no doubt about it, this town needs affordable shopping for people. In order for us to generate revenue, we need places to shop. I think we've maxed out for fast-food restaurants, restaurants, coffee shops. I think now it's time to seek out businesses, bring in business in affordable places to shop for people with low income. I think it would help. I think that we need to branch out and bring businesses in, not shut them out.
I'm inclined to agree with you. It's not the government's role to seek out, it's the government's role to accommodate and facilitate. And we've done that, and we continue to do that. For instance, the Health Department, that's not accommodating and facilitating the opening of new stores because of obvious reasons. Regulations may not impact the Health Department so much as it does the business. So economic development includes a lot of permitting, compliance with regulations. Anyone who started up any small business understands there's a whole ton to do before you open the door and turn the lights on. We also can't, we can't, we can't direct corporations to do certain things. So having more restaurants is beneficial to all, gives choice for a different, for a diverse population in town. It also provides some food tax revenue to the town. Any other type of business, maybe sales tax, that doesn't really come back to Greenfield. There's probably a trade-off with the rentals and how the money is reinvested in Greenfield and the property. So I agree with you. The Greenfield Business Association, I think, is gathering some new steam, they have some new energy, and we've been working closely with them, we'll continue to do that. And basically, we've got to follow some dreams individually, and as for the city, our vision is to continue to accommodate and facilitate, certainly with the partnership with the council.
Well, thank you for adding the point about it's not always our choice, because if there's empty buildings, businesses could come in. So I just want people to be careful what you wish for. Me personally, I'm all set with dollar stores in this town, so if we could move on to anything else, that would be great. But again, if they come in and the space is available, it's not like we really have that big of a choice in some places, so.
Councillor Lobick?
Yeah, I just want to mention, a few years ago, up in Berniston, Cabela's wanted to go up there. And I guess the farmer that was up there, he got a little too greedy on it, and he upped the price of what he wanted from them. Why can't we do something like that? Why do we, it doesn't need to be a food store, it doesn't need to be a place like Cabela's or any of those sporting goods stores, that would be an attraction to this area. There's nothing here, nothing. You've got to go to New York, you've got to go up to New Hampshire, or Vermont, or all the way down to Connecticut. That would bring in so many people into this town, and for business, and that would bring great amount of tax revenue for Greenfield.
Yes, councillor, I think you're right. L.L. Bean, I think, is moving into Hadley, so I think that's going to cut out Cabela's because they went to Hartford.
Well, L.L. Bean's, that's a small store that they're putting in there. But what I'm saying, like, what they did here in Greenfield years ago is they cut down Home Depot, they cut down BJ's, they would have paid a higher tax with bigger stores. What was the purpose of cutting them down? You look at those stores where they are now, there's plenty of room to go to a full-size store. People have to go to Hadley or Hoyok to go to anything for Home Depot.
I'm afraid "they" is "us," and whatever happened during their permitting process is what we ended up with. So if you're considering reducing the size of any large building, you stand a chance of losing the benefits of a larger building.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I really don't want to silence anyone, but I know we have more on the agenda. And to talk about our wish list of what we want to come here, it doesn't work that way, and so it's not really productive at this time. So I understand the things that are being said, but I just hoping that we don't start throwing out other names of stores and things. It just does not work that way, and we can't undo things. They're at a certain size now, they can come before us again and ask to be bigger because the space is still available. We can't sit here and wish it upon us, or try to get the town to make them do that. So let's work on some things that we can make some decisions about tonight.
Is there anything else from the mayor's office? Mark Smith?
Okay, as a follow-up to our last council meeting, Liz and I needed to go back regarding the Health and Building Department, determine the actual dollars, what we have to work with now for the remainder of the fiscal year. So first, I want to acknowledge councillor Gilmore for doing the motion, I mean, to rehear this vote. I also want to, I want to acknowledge all the council, because I, we believe in checks and balances. So at that meeting, there was some numbers that we weren't sure that were accurate at the time, and so it was brought to our attention by, you know, councillor Mas, councillor Alice, councillor Stempel, and others. And so Liz, at that time, was only two weeks on the job, so we did need more time. So in this past week, we've actually provided to the council the updated numbers of where we are for the remaining six months. So the good news with the Health Department, we do have enough dollars today to hire a qualified health director. That health director would be someone who also will be providing inspections too, so not just someone just, you know, working in the office. In that document also, we provided the council with three options for the remainder of this fiscal year. One option would be, and the Board of Health Chair, Steve Adam, mentioned it, the eighteen thousand. That would include, obviously, we have the funding for a full-time director, but that would also include, be able to hire a full-time inspector. The other option would be, again, we'd be able to hire a director as it is now, but to hire a half-time inspector. That cost, cost would be, the financial order today would be five thousand, three hundred and thirty, thirty dollars. So I think time is on our side now, because we only have six months left in the fiscal year. And we know the council, and for the record, the council is well aware of the situation. There's no fault here, there's been a lot of changes in the Health Office with staff leaving, and then we had, obviously, changes in our Finance Department. So we actually needed to get the time so we can actually give good information. And as a council, because I work with all the councillors, checks and balances are good. So the good news is that we can hire today, but having that additional staff would be helpful, obviously, with the current challenges that we have in the Health Department. Also need to mention the Building Department, too, and that financial order. Because we only have six months left in the fiscal year, if we were going to restore the Building Department to two full-time, that dollar amount would be nine thousand, five hundred dollars. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and obviously, you all will, I mean, will deliberate and obviously make that decision later on this evening, because I know we have a lot on the agenda. But I just wanted, again, as we said in the last council meeting, we would follow up with accurate information, so you all can make the best possible decision for Greenfield. Thank you.
Director Smith, I have a question. So the forty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars, basically, are you saying that is what we're looking at, what is needed?
No, the forty...
Because the original, the original motion was for seventy-two thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Yeah, so if we just go back to that last meeting, initially, when we filed the financial order, we were looking at doing an arrangement with Furcog. So for the Health Department, food inspections, that cost to do a contract with Furcog would be fifty thousand dollars. But it also required a three-year commitment. So the last council meeting, the discussion was, that's the direction we feel is not in the best interest for us to do, because we wanted to be able to hire, basically, restore the office. So currently, in the budget, we actually have forty-three thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars currently, so we can hire today, you know, present time, a full-time health director. In that sheet, so the financial order, if we're going to add to that, if we want to basically hire an additional staff person to work along that director for a full-time inspector, it would be only eighteen thousand and change. If you wanted the option of just doing a half-time inspector, that would work along that full-time health director, the amount is five thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. But again, that's only from January first through June 30th, the remainder of the fiscal year.
Councillor Stempel?
What would the figure be if we were to hire a second full-time inspector?
So if you wanted to hire a full, a second full-time inspector, eighteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars.
Up from the fifty-three, thirty. Like, so it's, instead of the fifty-three, thirty, it's eighteen thousand, a difference of like, less than...
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Like, twelve thousand dollars and some change for a forty-hour...
Correct.
...person on the staff in the field catching up the backlog of inspections?
Yeah, we, there is a, there is a backlog.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Alice?
So is it my understanding that that money was in the budget the entire time?
That's correct.
Okay. So when we asked the question last month, because we had, well, I had a report that showed differing numbers, and I had an email that showed differing numbers, it wasn't crazy for me to think that maybe there was something that we could do other than that.
No, no, it wasn't crazy, and that's why we took pause, and we needed more time, and Liz being only on the job for two weeks, to go back to really, you know, delve, and see what was encumbered, what, I mean, I'm not going to speak for the Finance Director, but she was able to give us the correct number.
Right. Are you familiar, do you know what the staffing was last year under the FY18 budget? Do you know what we had for staff that year?
Okay, which fiscal year?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. What was that? We had, we had a health director, okay, hold on, health director, inspector, and one full-time inspector. And then admin assistant, and then also the public health nurse.
And were any of, so then we, this year, we started the year, and we voted a budget of...
One forty-four.
One forty-four.
Correct.
Is it, am I correct, when I look at the budget, that the departmental request was only for one forty-six? And that the mayor asked for more? Is that correct?
No.
Because in my budget book, it says FY19 request, one forty-six, three oh one, and then it says FY19 mayor, one ninety-seven, oh eighty-six. So I'm, I'm, oh, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
It's on, yeah, it's page one thirty-seven in the book.
Right.
It says FY19 request was one forty-six, three oh one. Is that correct?
Not the mayor's request.
No, but the departmental request was one forty-six.
That is what I'm seeing here, yes.
So we approved only two thousand less than the departmental request. So was, were any of the staff positions that are still there, were they increased after our vote? Either the hours or the, or the amount that they were paid?
We have that. No.
Well, I, well, one staff person was increased when we lost a health inspector, when one, basically, at the beginning of the fiscal year, July one, we had two, at the time, we had two full-time health inspectors, public health nurse, and a part-time admin assistant or clerk, at that time.
So that was in eighteen, at the end of eighteen, that's what we had, was two inspectors, a health nurse, and a part-time...
Admin, yeah.
And the eighteen budget was one hundred and seventy-three thousand, six fourteen?
I'm sorry.
I'm just trying to understand.
No, it actually ended up at one eighty-one, nine sixty-four because of contracts.
But that extra money was taken out of contractual stabilization, correct?
Right, but I, I mean, it was the basis of funding the positions.
So the, so the ultimate eighteen budget was a hundred and eighty-one thousand? After the contractual stabilization?
Correct, a hundred and eighty-one, nine sixty-four.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councillor Pyfrum?
I just want to be clear one more time, Mark. So the money that's there now is forty-three thousand, eight nine five point zero one.
Correct.
And all that would be needed to fund that other position would be about nineteen thousand.
If you were doing a full-time inspector.
If you're rounding it.
Right, if, and, yeah, for six months.
Six months. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
School committee superintendent?
Madam President, is this the time to ask our library questions, or are we going to do that separately with, like, financial questions? I didn't know if this was the time for that, or whether it was, we were going to have another chance.
Let's let the, because I see the school committee chairperson working her way all the way down here, so let's let, let's let her go first, and then we'll get back to library.
Okay, that's fine, yeah, it doesn't matter to me either way.
And actually, Vice President Rickis, could you run the meeting for a second while I go?
Okay.
Hi.
Council President Nunes, welcome.
Hi, school committee, not council, not yet, not yet.
School committee president.
Thank you very much. I will be briefed this evening. The superintendent was unfortunately not able to attend tonight. However, from the committee table, you'll want to know that we have entered into... However, from the committee table, you'll want to know that we have entered into negotiations with Unit A. Those are our wonderful, lovely, dedicated teachers. We've just approved, or recently approved, a contract from our cafeteria workers, and we will begin negotiations with Unit C, our instructional assistants, very soon. As well, the committee will be jumping into FY20 budget development. In order to get us off to a great start, we invited Tracy Novick from the MASC to attend our most recent meeting. She gave us about a half an hour presentation at our last meeting. And I encourage each of you who are interested in learning more about public school funding, specifically Greenfield, but also just generally in Massachusetts, to take a look at the GCTV video. You may find it interesting. And of course, if you have any questions, send them our way. As well, members of the public, you all may be interested in watching that video also. It was the first main agenda item, so it's not too deep into the video. Let's see. Aside from that, policy review is ongoing. And you have a very important agenda item, number 1010, I believe, it's one of the last items on your agenda today. The committee has requested that the mayor put forward a request to change language related to an FY16 capital order to support PA systems in our schools. It is to change the language to remove the word wireless. This is number 1010, order number FY16145. The committee strongly encourages and requests that the council support this change in language. And if there are any questions related to that item, I'd be happy to take them now, if that's okay. I can only stay until about 9:30. So I'm not sure if we'll get to number 1010 by 9:30. I recognize you have a lot to discuss this evening.
Do any councilors have questions? Councilor Mass?
Chairperson Nunes, first of all, thank you for your effort on pushing that item forward. I know we've been in a lot of communication over several months of getting it here, and I appreciate the mayor's work on that item as well. We are definitely going to do what we need to for school safety. I do have two questions for you. The first one is, do you know why it's so cold in this room, and is there anything that can be done about that? And I'll leave that to you, if you can talk to someone afterwards. The second question is, and I emailed you about this, and I don't know if you were able to sort of get a better handle on it since that email. I attended the middle school band concert, which was amazing, as it always is, and I had the opportunity to look that the lights that we had appropriated to be fixed for that auditorium had still not begun repair. Do you know when that will be completed?
It's my understanding that plans for that are actually in action, and the superintendent hopes for that project to be completed after the winter break. I will follow up with her, however, I don't want to give you bad information, I appreciate you bringing that up. As well, I appreciate the ongoing conversation that we've had related to this PA system order. And this did come up at a recent CRE meeting, and multiple council members did express support for changing this language. I understand that each and every one of you supports our students in having the safest schools that we can provide.
Are there any more questions?
As well, if there are any questions specific to the goings-on in the school district that need to be forwarded on to the superintendent, I'm happy to do that.
I have a quick question. Can you tell us a little bit, little, emphasis?
Sure.
About the robotics?
Oh, my goodness. You know, it's a little embarrassing to say, Penny, but you might know a little more than I do about the robotics, other than our students have won awards for our robotics. The robotics program is incredibly popular at the middle school, and we are very proud of everything that's going on there. And from what I know from other committee members, we are all very excited about the work that our teachers are doing with our students, and the work that the students are putting into everything related to that program.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Well, convey that the council is proud of those students as well, and I know I followed it for like, one whole day on Facebook while they were at the competition, so.
Yes.
Kudo.
Thank you, Penny.
Anyone else? Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Let's see, is she set? Did we invite them today? Is she set here? Is she set here tonight? Okay. All right. So why don't we bring back the financial folks, so we can start asking?
Do we want to do that? Do we want to separate it?
You want to do that now, correct?
Yes.
Oh, I was going to say, I don't feel comfortable as Karens here.
Here I am. So library folks, we're going to ask you, this is going to be the time for councilors to ask their final questions of anyone involved with the construction of the library. I guess it's just our treasurer.
No, she's coming.
You do so much. I guess we're saving money tonight on heat, so. Sure, yeah. Councilor Wheeler?
Could we request that Dan Pallotta, the OPM, to sit at the table? Would that be appropriate?
Of course, yes. And if anybody knows how to control the heat in the building, that would be helpful.
Or microwave my coffee.
Just let me know when you're ready. And perhaps if you could all introduce yourselves, I know, of course, we know most of you already, but if you could introduce yourself for everybody in the audience, speak clearly into the microphone, and what your connection with this project is, that would be helpful.
Hi, my name is Philip O'Brien, I'm with Johns and Roberts Associates, pardon me, Architects.
Dan Pallotta, Project Manager.
Kelly Barner, Treasurer/Collector.
Liz Gilman, Finance Director.
Thank you all. And now, councilors, questions. Councilor Ellis?
Thank you, Madam President. My questions are, generally, we've been hearing a lot of, you know, how the funding is going to work, how much it's going to cost. We heard that we're retiring debt at a rate that will be able to be picked up by the new debt on the library and the firehouse. And I received, as did the rest of the council, the financial, well, this spreadsheet. And I need to understand a couple of things that are on here. It appears to me that we, at the end of fiscal 19, will have $43,9285 in outstanding debt. Is that correct?
General fund debt.
General fund debt, not water and sewer.
No.
Yeah. And not the issued, or the authorized, or the issued unauthorized.
Correct.
So I'm trying to understand where this reduction and increase matches, because as I look at this, from FY19 until FY26, we had 97% of debt to our load. Is that correct?
I'm not sure where you're getting.
From 43,9285 to 84,56,000. That's 97.7%.
Yes, if the estimations are correct.
Correct. That assumes what's at the top here, which is that it's 10 million for the library and 12 million for the firehouse.
Yes.
But these are the only numbers I have, so that's the assumption I'm going.
Yeah, and those are the only numbers I have to go by, at this point, so.
So for every question I have, it's based on the numbers in this spreadsheet.
Okay.
So I'm hoping you can explain to me where the debt that's falling off, which I don't see on the sheet, is coming from. So is that something you could explain to me?
The debt that's falling off, if you look at the column that says combined debt payments, that is what is being paid down every year. So the first year, you can see we're paying down 3.8 million, so that's going to come off of our total debt.
Right.
So if you just keep adding that, those numbers up, which I don't have them added in front of me, and I don't have a calculator, so.
But, yeah, but those numbers that we're paying off each year go up dramatically.
Well, they go up, yeah, once we do.
Once we bond.
Yes.
So we are adding to the debt, we're not?
Well, we're paying down initially, and then once, obviously, when we do another bond issue, depending on how much we bond, you are going to add back to your debt level.
Right, because ultimately, if the debt at the end of the year is more than the previous year, you've added debt, is that correct?
Yes.
So we will be adding, over the course of seven years, 97% more debt. Am I wrong in my figure?
If you're, yeah, if you're going by the totals, then yes, I would say you're correct.
That's this column right here that I'm looking at. Okay. So it's been, it's also been stated that to be within our, for the purposes of our bond rating, we need to carry 8% to 10% in debt.
That is what the S&amp;P suggests, yes.
Yeah, and it's my.
No more than 8%.
No more than, but if you have more than that, it's detrimental to your bond rating. If you have less than that, is it detrimental to your bond rating, or is it?
No, if you have less debt, obviously, it will improve your bond rating.
Okay. So that's a maximum amount of debt that we should have?
Yes.
So if we had less, that wouldn't be a bad thing?
No.
Okay, thank you, that was my other question. If we, I'll hold the rest of my questions until after we go around.
Councilor Wheeler?
My understanding of debt, bonding specifically, contradicts what was just stated. If you think about a personal credit rating, if you don't have debt, if you don't carry debt, you're actually going to have a lower credit score than someone who does carry debt. Could the Finance Director Gilman address your understanding of what happens to a bond rating when municipal debt gets below a certain number?
Why, I don't think it's drastically harming it, you do want to maintain a certain level. And that's exactly why you have an 8% to 10% policy. You do want to maintain a certain level, to be consistent, so you don't have big fluctuations in your debt issuance. I'm sorry, you can't hear. And so that's my understanding.
Councilor Mass?
I'd like to ask a couple of questions about some of the assumptions. This assumed, on the assumptions page, this says it assumes a 2% increase in the annual operating budget. My understanding is that over the last 10 years, we've been at about 1.65% increase annually on average. How did you reach the 2% figure?
I just looked at the last six years and did a rough estimate. I didn't do it down to 1.65 or anything like that. We were trying to keep it, you know, 1.5 to kind of keeping it even.
Would it be fair to say that that would be, over the course of the 20-year bond, that would be $3 million extra dollars in operating costs?
Maybe, I don't have, again, I can't do the calculation in my head.
Under number two, it says the fire station is projected at $12 million. Where did that figure come from?
Bob Strahan was the one that gave me that estimated number.
And do you have an estimate for a public safety complex?
I do not.
Councilor Wheeler?
Mr. Pallotta, would you be able to speak to the potential cost of building a fire station? Is that something that you've looked into at all in your research?
I'm looking up my list. If you give me just a second.
As long as I have the floor, I would, and this is just something that I saw today, looking into the cost of Ashland, of building a public safety complex in Ashland, Mass, which is a community of 17,000, they paid about $30 million this year to build a public safety complex.
Each facility's a little different, so some public, as you debated earlier, that you may or may not have dispatch, or dispatch might be moving, or you may take dispatch and it's regional. These all affect what the cost of a public safety building would be. Specifically on a fire station, an eight-base fire station with sleeping quarters and, you know, adequate space for training, and hoses, and decontamination, et cetera, would be somewhere around $10 million in today's dollars. The town of Carver just built one at $8.8 million total project cost. By the time you get to it here, it would be 10.
Councilor Gilmore?
So I was at the meeting last week, but could you remind us, you had stated a figure, you were comparing how much the price of a library goes up. So obviously, if we don't do this now, we would lose the $9.5 million grant, but also, this is eventually going to have to be done. So what are the accelerations that you're seeing so far?
So the question that we received from, I think it was Councilor Mass, was, the project in 1996 was $2 or $3 million. If you, why is this one so much higher when inflation's not that much higher? We extrapolated back to the number that you had for the size of the building that you had, and found that construction inflation in the Greenfield area is 5.92 or 3%, taking to the hundredth. Taking that square foot number came out to $543 a square foot. Once we took the 543, looked at a couple of other estimates, there were 543, 538, you know, in and around that area. And I used other projects, because they use the same estimator that did the estimate for the town of Greenfield in 1996 or five, or whenever it was. So that's where the number was built in from.
Right, but the question I was asking is, you had given us a figure that if we chose to do this a year down the line, or two years down the line, that it was going to add a certain price to it, separate from the fact that we would lose the grant.
You.
You don't, I just, I didn't, I didn't write it down, and I was just wondering if you had that figure in your notes, but if you don't, then that's fine.
I don't, so I'm sorry.
Councilor Sun?
Yes, I just, I was thinking, if people, you know, contributed up to the $9 million, the town would be accountable to any of it, right?
Do you mean the fundraising aspect?
Yeah, the fundraising. If $9 million was given to the town by people donating and everything else.
Do you mean the grant or fundraising?
Fundraising. It wouldn't be much left.
The town needs to raise and appropriate $19,541,296. If the town had a $9 million bequeathed, and that was accepted by the town, and you then appropriated it, add to the balance of the amount, you would have a bill at the end of the project of somewhere around a million or million and a half. So you'd need to permanently raise over $10 million to have no effect.
But the more you raise, the less tax burden would be on everybody, right?
Absolutely. Yes, but not, but I want to be clear, not all of it. So as the mayor indicated earlier, all right? So as the mayor indicated earlier, all right, the grant is based on $20,959,000, which was the project cost when the grant application went in. The mayor submitted the order for the minimum amount required to receive the grant and expects the town of Greenfield to raise the balance, which is primarily furniture, landscaping, and paving, which are not eligible by the MBLC to be part of the grant. I hope I didn't confuse everybody.
Well, I just wondered, you know, the grant and the money that is raised by a fundraiser, if it doesn't do anything more on the grant, why have any fundraising?
Yeah.
It would be that much less that you would have to bond for, and your debt payment would be lower for everything that was fundraised.
Counselor Stumpel?
I think I understand what, I'm going to paraphrase and tell me if I'm hitting it. I think what he's asking is why, why do we have to appropriate the $19 million figure, Vern? Is that what, if there's going to be fundraising, is that what you're asking, is why we have to appropriate the full total of $19 million?
Yeah. Why, you know, I'm trying to get the debt rate down as much as possible for all this in the Greenfield. And without, all of a sudden go way up and if you get people that are willing to donate, of course, you donate a dollar, you're not going to get much when it's $19 million.
The, the construction process takes many years, three years? Oh, okay.
I think I can answer.
All right.
I hope so. So the requirement is that you raise and appropriate $19 million. That's, that's part of the regulations and part of the grant process. On this particular project, your final bonding amount will be $9,966,773, or $10 million, because you bond in increments of $10,000. You will, you will, you will borrow on a temporary basis, the way the, this is one of the better programs the Commonwealth does in anything. And the reason being is, is they front-load you a lot of money so that the effects of the project come in slowly. I think you heard the mayor say that the first bond payment would be in 2026 or 2025 or 2024. And that's because when you get the grant, they're going to give you $1,875,637 as soon as you sign the grant. I'm sorry. Okay. And as soon as we, we complete the, the construction documents, we get another payment of $1,875,000. What that does is make it that the town doesn't put any money in at all till late fiscal year '21, fiscal year '20, all right? And that's an antifast amount of bond anticipation note only, interest only. In '21, you'll be doing, getting another payment of 1.8 million. And as we're finishing up the project, you'll have temporarily borrowed $12,863,000, waiting for the fifth payment to come in, which brings it down to the $10 million. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes. Basically, I mean, the bottom line, and Director Gilmore tell me if I'm wrong, is that the more money that is raised through fundraising efforts is less of a tax burden on the people of Greenfield.
Correct. And I just would like to add that also, that the treasurer needs authorization to temporarily borrow that amount until those funds come in and until we bond.
But it is absolutely true that the more money that is raised, the less of a tax burden. Counselor Pye, from?
Thank you. Can you tell me how much has been raised to date for the capital fundraiser?
I don't know these. I don't know, but what I could tell you is that since last Thursday, $50,000 has additionally has been raised, just since last Thursday.
Can you tell me if there's been any past effort to fundraise for the other two grants that were passed? Anything, the '95, '96 grant?
They weren't, they were not passed.
There, was there any fundraising effort at that time?
They weren't passed. The state rejected the application for a grant in '96.
So there was no, from, from then on to this date, there has been not any fundraising effort at all?
There's been a foundation established about a year ago to create a capital campaign with the goal of raising at least $2 million.
So there is a fund with money currently now, other than the, the current fundraiser that's happening now, that can be applied toward the amount that you're, you're fundraising? Is that right? Do you have a, do you have an account, a bank account?
No, there isn't. I can answer that. No. Counselor Mass?
I'd like to go back to the question about construction inflation. You indicated that construction inflation in the Greenfield area is 5.4% per year. Is that right? Is that the correct figure?
What I, what I indicated was that construction inflation onto Chapter 149 projects in this area is, according to my figures, using your data, 5.98%.
And I, am I correct that the amount in the grant application and the budget for this project for construction inflation is 4% per year?
That is the maximum that the MBLC will allow us to carry.
So this project will actually end up costing more than it's budgeted for based on historical trends for construction inflation in this area?
No, because the, if the project gets moving, you're not going to, you're not going to need the last year of the inflation, the escalation number that's in that package. So the, in this grant program, those projects that are at the top of the list have an incredible benefit, as opposed to those at the bottom of the list. Because you're only allowed to carry a maximum amount of escalation, the quicker we get to construction, the less escalation we can use. So I, you know, you're not going to be over if it goes quicker, but you will be over if it goes slower.
So if everything works perfectly, it won't, it won't cost more. But if there's a delay, it will cost more.
If there's a delay, it will cost more. That's a fair statement.
The, the bond chart we have, that does not, am I correct that that does not include any calculations for bonding any of the debt held by GSAT?
That is correct, because that's technically an enterprise fund, which is separate.
And so there, any bonding that we do for GSAT is exempt from those, from Prop 2.5, obviously, right?
The basis of the enterprise funds is that they will pay all the costs associated with each fund, water, sewer, GSAT. So when that bonds, GSAT would be responsible for the payment.
And so what happens if the revenue from GSAT does not meet the cost of paying the bond for GSAT?
It's a good question. Then we need to sit down and look at the options for GSAT. I mean, you, you look at what makes something financially viable.
Well, the town still, would be still liable for the bond.
Correct. Oh, sorry.
Does this use, does this bonding chart include water and sewer debt?
No.
Those are also separate in an enterprise bond?
Yes. That's correct.
How, how much water and sewer debt are projected in the five-year capital budget? Do we have any idea?
Marlo? No, not at this time. It is, there's a couple of projects that I know of coming down that Marlo has told me about, but five years, I can't, I'm too new. Marlo's new.
Okay. Thank you.
So we had a speaker during Public Comment, Fern, who mentioned the multiplying effect of dollars invested in municipalities. And Mr. Pallada, you have a lot of experience building municipal buildings and managing those projects. Here's if you can talk more about your experience in the communities that you've worked with, whether or not you have any knowledge of this multiplying effect for dollars invested in the municipalities, or?
I mean, I'm sure you can find a study on this and a study on that online. I can tell you that I buy a sandwich every day when I'm in Greenfield, and I'm one person. And that when the public library moves forward, that, you know, I, the shirt came from Wilson's, you know, so, because I spilled something on it. Whenever I spill something coming out Route 2, I have to buy a shirt at Wilson's. So I, I mean, I think, I think the reality of the matter is that you're going to have temporary and, you know, permanent changes, and the temporary change is going to be the construction workers that are going to be coming in, some from the area and some not from the area, that are going to need housing and going to need, going to need food and materials. And you're also going to have a change in the number of people that come to the library. And, you know, the census will go up at the library. I gave an example of Eastham going up 250% and settling down to 200%. That's a huge number for the little town of Eastham. It's not uncommon in a library to do, library community to do that. We expect that in your library, because it's the hub of the county, as well as the hub of the downtown. I mean, that's pretty much the center.
Any other questions from the counselors? Counselor Ellis?
So I was reading our S&amp;P global ratings based, that was the, the rating on our short-term borrowings. And I'm curious to know what the impression of that was from the finance team. It, it tells us that we have a weak, that we have weak debt, and that our contingent liability profile is a problem for us. It goes on to outline how, how much in OPEB we owe, which is quite a bit, and it outlines that we have a good fiscal situation when it comes to stabilization accounts. Now, this was before we drew, we drew down our stabilization accounts. So my question is, if we add to the debt and we've drawn down our stabilization, those are, those are going the wrong direction for the S&amp;P. Is that correct? Under the, when they go to rate our, our short-term borrowing?
I do believe our priority is to replenish stabilization. That's the pattern I've seen when free cash is certified. And hopefully, you know, you maintain the level of, you don't see the budget fluctuations that you have seen in the past year that made this all very difficult, timing-wise, in terms of when the budget was passed and then needing to add significant increase in, in debt to the operating budget. I don't anticipate that will happen again. We need to present a budget that's balanced as much-
We didn't anticipate it this time either.
Yeah.
But I guess my question is, is it, is it the opinion that this will have absolutely no effect on our bond ratings to, to take on as much debt at one time as we're, we're looking to do?
I don't, I'm not anticipating to say, to say, no, it won't have any effect. I would need to get probably more insight from some counsel on, on the exact impact, but I don't think all of a sudden it's going to plummet.
Well, I wasn't suggesting it's going to plummet. I'm suggesting that it will go down, and that will raise our cost of borrowing.
That, that, that is what happens when it goes down. Correct.
Treasurer, treasurer, my next question's for the treasurer, actually.
Mayor Martin, did you have something that you wanted to say, though? Because you took the-
Thank you, Madam President. My, my comment has to do with the, the report that Counselor Ellis is reading from. That report is Standard Empores, a report on the city of Greenfield and our last bonding situation. Greenfield has a double A minus. Double A minus is very good. Triple A is the best. So maybe triple A plus, I don't know if that exists. But let me also say that when they describe a weak, what was it you quoted, Counselor?
Weak debt.
Weak debt. That means it has low debt. Doesn't mean it has strong debt, which means you have high debt. So that is the interpretation understood across the economy world. In addition, there are very favorable comments. You skipped over just before that and just after that comment of weak, weak debt, indicating the growth revenues and the growth of the town, the economic development, the amount of number of initiatives and programs that have been going on in Greenfield. So the treasurer does have that on electronic email, and we can forward that to every counselor and you can read the whole report.
Actually, everyone's already got it, because you sent it to us about four months ago.
Good.
Counselors, I'm going to now insist that, I don't usually like to do this, but you're, you're going to have to be recognized by me, and there's not going to be a continuous back and forth unless I've recognized you with our panel. So does another counselor want to ask a question? And I'm not going to limit any councils, I just don't want the continuous back and forth without being recognized. Is there another counselor that want to ask, ask a question or comment? And Counselor Ellis, I see you're the only one whose hand is ready, so. Wait a second, Counselor Ricketts?
Why did I walk in the middle of? No. What I wanted to say, though, because I had read that in the recorder, that only one of our counselors had questions that night, and I just want to thank you now, because I did send many questions to you in email, and I just want to thank you, because you stated them all and you answered them all for me. And some of them came from residents, and some of them were from myself. So I do want to acknowledge that I did send many questions and that you did answer them all that evening.
Counselor Ellis?
So my question for the treasurer was, I was, I was curious, because I asked the Finance Director, I was going to ask you the same question. Do you believe that borrowing that much money at one time is a good idea in regards to our financial picture overall?
Well, like Liz said, it, it is going to affect our bond rating. It is going to affect our pool of bidders and the interest rates we're going to get. I have no idea how much it's going to affect it. You know, I don't know if it's going to drop, drop us from a double A minus to a B, or, you know, I, I really don't, don't know.
But if, and I have a question. A lot of, I think it's fair to say that a lot of things are hard to answer. It's not that black and white, because the town could also raise money, as we talked about with medical marijuana, recreational marijuana, possibly an Airbnb tax, other economic growth. So in a sense, it's, you're trying to answer questions that are virtually impossible. So anything you could do beyond giving an answer is really just a speculation. Is that fair?
That is fair. Absolutely. None of us have a crystal ball. We don't know what, what's going to happen in the future.
Okay. Counselor Sun?
I'm kind of confused. If I'm going to borrow something over and above what I can pay back, and along, you know, over 30 to 40 years, and the interest go, you're not going to go up. You know, I'm confused why it wouldn't, you know, you've got $19 million you're going to borrow. Wouldn't it be better to have some money paid down before you, so you wouldn't have to borrow as much?
Thank you, Counselor Sun. That's an excellent question, and it gives us an opportunity to remind us what the numbers are. So the, the request of the council tonight is 19.5 million. That's by law. So that's also been verified by bond counsel. And bond counsel has also told us that if we have that last sentence in the order, in the financial order, which you have, which allows the mayor to take by grant or any other source, or any other fund, monies to reduce the cost. So you would have 19.5, and I'm using rough numbers, minus the 9.4 million. So that leaves you only with 10 million left to pay for by the town. And then you deduct then any money raised, and then you deduct then any savings and efficiencies during construction. That's what Greenfield would end up paying. And my guess, it's going to be between $7 and $8 million. It's going to cost $7 million to fix the-
To fix the library.
Right. It's going to cost $7 million to fix the library. So do you want to spend $7 million to fix the library and end up with a building that's 200 years old, built during George Washington when he was president? Or do you want to have a brand-new building for $7 million and then derive some revenue from that building in other ways that are yet to be, to be stated so far?[688.17][688.17](APPLAUSE)
Counselor Dolan?
Mr. Mayor, thank you for that. And on the subject of savings, would you mind addressing the potential sale of the building? Do we have a ballpark figure?
The building comes at a great expense to anyone who buys it. So I, because it's a historic building, there's a lot to do. And we've pretty much documented between $7 and $8 million. So I don't have a number. I know there are interested parties. I was approached a couple of years ago, and I understand there's an interested party as of today. So it, it all depends on your vote. If you don't vote, if you table it, or if you reject it, well, hold off the rejection. If you table it or you don't vote tonight, it only stops everything else. It pauses everything else. So when we come back again, in February, March, April, whenever it might be, then it's the same questions, same answers, just about. 90 days means nothing in 30 years. So then we have to, as Dan alludes to, the costs are increasing, the coordination, the, everything is off balance. So it's obviously your choice, but a rejection will settle the matter again for another 25 years. And there'll be different counselors, different mayor, different architect, different treasurer, and it's going to be a different number. So it, it really takes courage to do this. We can afford it. It's within our debt ceiling. It makes sense. We're still going to work with infrastructure. We're going to work with a $8 million anaerobic digester that some counselors want to talk about. Yes, it's true. It's not going to cost Greenfield $8 million. We already have a million dollars set aside in the construction bond, or in the economic development bond for the million. And we also have five, four other communities interested in sharing that cost, along with the USDA grant, if we go that way, and a DEP grant, if we go that way. I mean, all this stuff is to, is, is work, and we do a lot
Counselor Lobach?
Mayor Martin, I just have a quick question. Are you, is there, are there people that are interested in purchasing that building?
Yes, there is.
Okay, because I heard that the, the bank was probably interested, but nobody had approached them.
We can't deal with any of those speculation on who was, would be interested in purchasing it, but there are two parties that have declared some interest.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Pyfram?
How many estimates have we gotten, you know, related to refinishing the library, repurposing the library? It sounds like we only have one estimate so far of $7 to $8 million. Has there been other studies to, to, you know, search out a lesser, a lesser million?
I, I tried to touch on this back last week, and, and maybe it wasn't successful. Sorry about that. I, I thought I was loud enough to begin with. The, library is, is a unique place. It's, it's a historic structure, and it's deficient in everything. So when you go down the path on a building and you cross the 30% threshold of, of construction value, you have to do it all. You have to replace everything. You have to do energy efficiency. You have to do everything. Even though you might get some historic pullback from some of the harsher regulations, the National Historic Register makes you put other regulations on. So rehabbing that building is very, very costly. The numbers that we came up with for the rehab of the building were based on similar rehabs in, in Western Massachusetts, primarily on the UMass campus. There was a church, and there was a exterior, there's some exterior work being done on some facades. We gathered that data and applied it to the size of your building. On top of that, you need elevators. On top of that, you need a temporary library while you're doing all this work. On top of that, you've got testing and surveying and design work and, and procurement. That's where the number of $7 million came from. It wasn't pulled out of the sky. It wasn't a dot board. It was an actual thought process to get there. You, there is another study that I referenced that someone had asked a question about at one of the, one of the meetings, and it was related to a accessibility study that was done by the town, on the whole town, but it's more of a global thing. And under the library section, it prefaced it by saying, you know, there's a new library coming down the pike. And they really didn't dig into the library like they should have. They basically had a couple of small things to make the library easier to get into, but not solving the ADA issues that exist in the library. To make the stacks ADA accessible, you will lose 30% of the stacks you currently have. That's just one item. There are a lot of items in that building, such as the width of the elevator, the size of the elevator, the doorknobs everywhere, the 18-inch and the 12-inch rule on doors everywhere, the circulation desk. I could go on and on and on and on and on. Lighting, HVAC. It, it's, it's just too numerous to get into. That's where this comes from. Do you want to add to that?
No, that was a good, that was a good description.
Counselor Gilmore?
Actually, he ended up addressing something that I was going to ask about, so I think I'm good.
I have a question. Mr. Pallada, you did the, the John Zahn Center, and it came in under budget, right?
Yes.
Okay. Do you remember how much under budget it came in?
I think it was 183,000 when, when we, when we were done.
Okay. Vice President Ricketts, and then Counselor Pyfram?
Well, I think our city is just on a lucky streak, because if I'm correct, then at our high school, come in under budget and under time.[1114.64][1114.64](APPLAUSE)
Counselor, I had already called Counselor Pyfram, and then Counselor Stempel?
My next question was, was there any sort of study to do in addition to the back of the building, all one level with ADA compliance, locating the back entrance as the main entrance, your main source of coming in, updating, having updated bathrooms and so forth in a small addition in the back?
Yes. I got to find it, though. This is, I've got a stack as, as large as Counselor Ellis's stack, so it's going to take a second. Grabbed it from the architect. He gave it to me. Oh, there it is.
Question for the mayor, also.
Yeah, that, that was the, the plan of it.
That's the, that's the new building.
That's the new building?
While you look for that, I believe Counselor Pyfram has a question for the mayor?
Yes.
So you can look for that document.
The, the new community center, we have a lot of space there to utilize, and I understand that it's not being utilized to its full capacity. And no council will be meeting there soon.
So I don't know what you mean, full capacity. So usually you break up the units of the day, so 24 hours would be full capacity, unless you break it down to open hours, which would be 8 to 4:30. If you use that span of time, then that would be considered full capacity, and that nearly is. If you go, say, 8:30 to 7 or 8 o'clock, it may or may not be. There are a number of organizations that are using it on a regular basis, though, in the evening.
So some of the space we talked about before, doing the project, that teen, teen use, so, because we were without a teen center and that, you know, a place for teens to go to, you know, study or, you know, hang out.
It is a community center, so it's open to anyone. They can go in anytime it's open. If they want to reserve the room at night for whatever it might be, then they go through the process. The process is not formalized completely, but all internal governmental organizations that want to use the property work through Hope McCary, the director of the Council on Aging, and all external requests for the property go through the mayor's office until we have a finalized set of policies and procedures for using and renting the space.
Excuse me, so other than this, the senior center portion being used for the senior centers not being utilized by any other, you know, set programs?
I didn't say that. I, I actually said the opposite. I said that there are a number of rooms and spaces in the senior center used by, in the community senior center, used by outside groups. I can get a list for you and forward it, if that would help.
Sure. Oh, yeah, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Pallada, do you have the rear entrance information?
I don't know if it's a rear entrance on this. Do you want to speak to it?
Okay.
He's going to speak to it. He drew it. I'm going to have to get closer.
So this is Mr. O'Brien, the architect.
That's right. Thanks.
O'Brien.
O'Brien?
O'Brien.
Oh, okay. Yes. O'Brien? O'Brien, right? Okay.
Thank you.
That guy. Let's go.
So we, we did a couple of plans for how we might be able to add on to the existing building. I think, you can correct me if you're wrong, you may have been asking about doing a small addition onto the back of the building that just provides entrance and access and a couple of toilets. Is that what your question is?
Entrance with programming.
Okay, so you're, you're talking about-
Depending on the size of the, the addition.
Okay.
It would be an addition.
These, these plans, and I think we could probably interpolate between them.
Yes, we could.
Sorry. We could probably interpolate between what you're asking about and what we studied. The, the tasks that we had, in addition to the study that, that Dan just mentioned to you about the cost of just renovating the existing building, we also looked at doing additions and renovations to the existing building to support the library program that we had. We looked at doing new buildings as well as additions and renovations to the existing building. And the issue with the existing building is the, there are numerous floor elevations on each of the levels inside the building. And that makes it difficult to provide access to all those different spaces without providing elevators, lifts, and ramps, and additional stairs to support all those spaces. What that gives you in the end is a very inefficient building, and that inefficiency comes across in the size, the overall size of the building. The inefficiency comes in providing handicapped accessibility in all, for all of the materials, for all the tables, for all of the computers, all the desks, all the rooms everywhere inside the building. And you have, when you, when you're designing a new building, and you need, you need a room that's 600 square feet, for example, you can build a room that's 600 square feet. When you're trying to fit a 600-square-foot room that's in your building program into an existing building, you have to find the room that fits it the best, or you have to demolish the room that's there and rebuild it. So we try to find things that fit the best, and try to take advantage as best we can of the original building. But what that means is, everything doesn't fit perfectly because it's not designed to meet this program. It's also not designed to be a library. So there's a lot of things that we couldn't do with your existing building. I can't put book stacks anywhere inside your existing building. It doesn't support structurally loading that we need to do it, and it costs too much to change it. What, what that basically meant was, is when we compared a new building to the existing building based on the original 30,000-square-foot building program that we had, this addition scheme was almost 36,000 square feet in order to get the same programmatic space inside it, over the 30,000-square-foot new building. It's an astronomical amount of extra space that you need just to accommodate all of the additional inefficiencies in the plan. And so I think if we could extrapolate or interpolate between this larger plan and the one that we did for just renovating the building, I think you'll see that you might be able to get some, a small, you might be able to get a small amount of additional space onsite and make it accessible in that new part. But making the original building accessible, what it basically is going to mean is, is you're going to have to clear that building out, and what goes back into it is going to have to be a lot less than's in there now. So at the end of the day, if you were to add 1,000 or 2,000 square feet in the building, you're going to end up actually with a smaller building than you do now in terms of what you can provide for services and materials, reading spaces, tables, chairs, and computers. You just won't have the space in there.
Counselor Stempel? I thought I said Counselor Pyfram, and then Counselor Stempel? No? Okay.
I, I do want to add to, 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 Madam President?
Yes.
I do want to add to Phil's comment that the 1996 rejection of the grant, or '95 rejection of the grant, was because, the first grant that you applied for in '95 was rejected because you were adding on to that building, and they did not want you to add on to that building. The second one didn't, didn't, didn't move forward.
Counselor Mass?
Two short questions, Counselor. Related to construction projects that have, that have been done recently, the community center, that, when you said it came in about 185,000 under budget, that's under the budget as appropriated by the council, not the original $5 million plus sought by the mayor?
The program was cut back when the council cut the budget.
And you came under that?
We came under the appropriation of, of your body. So we took that budget, and we, we, we guided it with our lives.
And second question is, the parking garage, Mayor, I know you weren't, I don't think you were involved in the parking garage. Parking garage, that was, is our most recent construction, actually ran into unforeseen construction costs for a carriage house that was found underneath that used all of the contingency funds, and actually resulted in you coming forward to the council for supplemental appropriation. Isn't that correct?
That is true.
So things happened both ways.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes, so if we come in under budget, which would be ideal, then that's less money that we're going to have to pay back, and it would lower the tax burden. But if we cut the budget tonight, could you tell me what happens to the grant?
If the order that's on the floor is amended down, you will not be eligible for the grant.
Counselor Mass?
Question I didn't foresee asking, but I do want to ask, because I think counselors deserve having the right to access to all the information. Can this, can this grant, this motion be made contingent on a certain amount of fundraising being achieved? Meaning that the count, that the town would not be authorized if the fundraising goals weren't met?
I think it has to be cash on hand. I think it has to be cash on hand, so.
You can have contingent appropriations.
The answer was you can't. Any other questions or comments before we start our deliberations? Thank you all.
Good questions.
Madam President? As a member of the school committee, I will move to find out why we don't have heat in the building after 6:30.
Thank you. It is now 9:30. I'm going to close the public hearing, and we're going to move on to more, to motions, orders, and resolutions. Counselor Stempel?
The town council moved that it be ordered, motion for reconsideration, that the town council reconsider's the following motion defeated by the town council on November 20th, 2018. Order number FY19-038. Motion, on a motion by Counselor Stempel, second by Counselor Mass, it was by a roll call, vote, three yes, six no, defeated the sum of strike-through $72,800, replaced with $42,800, be transferred from general stabilization for food inspection- $72,800, replaced with $42,800, be transferred from general stabilization for food inspections, services, and to increase a local billing inspector from part-time to full-time in the FY19 operating budget. 511 food inspection services, $50,000 strike-through, replaced with $20,000. 241 Building Department, $22,800. Total strike-through, $72,800, replaced with $42,800 as amended.
Second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, so this, we are voting on the motion, whether or not we're going to reconsider this motion. Any comments? Nope, seeing none?
What's that?
Good, because it's non-debatable. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Did somebody oppose? Counselor Mass opposed. Any abstentions? Motion passes. So now the motion is on the floor. Recommendation from committee?
We didn't, it's a motion to reconsider, so we didn't take it up.
Okay, so you didn't talk about it. All right. Does the Chair of Ways and Means want to speak on it?
How much time do I have? I'm just kidding, kidding, kidding. I like to make these meetings fun. So I would like to, upon recommendation of Director Smith, I would like to amend, I would like to amend, can I do that now? I'd like to amend the food inspection services $20,000. I'd like to amend that to $18,000. And 241 Building Department, I would like to amend that to $9,500.
Is there a second?
And I would also have to amend the total for math. I can't do the math right now. So 18, we're looking at 27,5. Correct me if I'm wrong. I'm studying from my GMAT.
Is there a second?
Second.
So the motion to amend has been made and seconded. So now the total amount on the floor is $27,500. Any discussion? Counselor Wheeler?
This might be a friendly amendment, but I, just in looking at the figures from Town Hall, the exact number was $18,830. Do we want to consider that?
I accept.
Thank you.
Just of the amendment, not the main motion. Counselor Stempel, I don't know if you accept as a friendly amendment striking the word "food." I believe it's the intent of the mayor, and I believe, and I might be mistaken, it may be your intent that it be all inspection services.
Yes. Thank you. I accept. Counselor Mass.
Any other discussion on the amendment to the motion? So we're voting on the amendment, which would change the total sum from inspections and take away the word "food," so just inspection services to $18,830, and the Building Department to $9,500. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay, so now the main motion is on the floor. Is there any discussion? Counselor Mass?
Thank you, President Reno. I'm going to ask my colleagues to bear with me, because I want to go through some history related to the Health Department and the budget.
One thing I do want to say, I'm sorry I didn't announce this first, but because of the length of tonight's meeting, I am going to hold to the rules of procedure in which every counselor will speak no more than five consecutive minutes of debate. So just, I don't want people to be caught off guard when we're timing you. So commence.
Thank you, President Reno. In fiscal year 2018, which is the prior year fiscal budget, it's not the current year budget, the Health Department requested a $5,685 reduction in their budget. The mayor saw fit to seek a further reduction. He saw a $10,945 reduction. That's just the salary and wages. He doubled the, the cut that the Health Department saw. Subsequent to that, even though the budget was cut, he raised on June 19, 2017, the health clerk to 25 hours a week. It wasn't budgeted for, it wasn't, didn't exist prior, but he added, he raised it up. It was a modest increase, but it was an increase. There were some savings in that department because at approximately the same time, the health director resigned, or very, very shortly thereafter. So there were some savings in the ability to do that. Throughout the course of the following year, he raised the clerk to 30 hours, and then 37 and a half hours, and then made it permanent in January 2018, and that was without an appropriation from the council for that purpose. He further, this past year, the department, as was raised by Counselor, Counselor Alice, saw 20, saw a $27,000 reduction in their appropriation. The council cut that by $2,000, or $2,135,000. The mayor sought a $50,785 increase in that department. And he said, it says in his budget book that that was designed to accommodate for the growth of the department, not for the maintenance of the department, not to keep doing what it always did, because he intended to grow that department. He further said that he was bringing up the, the, the public health nurse to 20 hours, plus eight hours that was grant-funded, and that was for the purpose of overseeing and managing the department, including overseeing Board of Health meetings. That's in his budget book at page 136. The council didn't vote that. We didn't appropriate what the mayor asked for. Yet July, July of that year, after the, after the budget was passed, the mayor still bumped up the public health nurse. And so when we look at what happened, that the council cut, while we only cut 2,000 less than the department requested, that still remained to be a 17% cut of the department. It was a substantial cut. 17%, however, 17% of what, of a department that had five employees. And had the mayor not increased the clerk's hours, had he not increased the public health hours, if he instead chose to invest that money into health inspectors, there would be adequate health inspectors today. And I'm as troubled as everyone else is at the lack of inspectors. As of today, or, sorry, as of June 6, according to the, the report by, that was provided by the Health Department, $15,982.24 was spent on the health clerk. If that was cut back to what it was appropriated for, which was a halftime clerk, that would, that would free up $8,000 for the rest of the year. That's $2,105 short of the cost of two health inspectors, according to the mayor's numbers. The money exists within the budget. This is not a, this, in my opinion, is not a funding problem. This is a management problem. It does not matter how much we appropriate. We could appropriate $1 million for that department. We can't tell the mayor who to hire and who not to hire, or how much time to put people into. He has sole discretion over that department. All we do is we set an amount of money that you have to run the department within, and you've got to work within that amount of money. In this case, it was $2,000 less than the department requested. Incidentally, we approved a 20% increase to the expenses of that department, which, given the fact that they haven't been doing any work, is another source for funds to come from. Additionally, there was a longevity stipend that was carried over from the previous year, even though there was no one eligible for a longevity stipend. So that money is further available within the department. The, I am completely committed to having a Health Department that has health inspectors. That's what we should be having, is health inspectors that do health inspection work, not clerks, not public health nurses. I just have one last thing, Counselor, President Reno. The real trouble with this particular motion is that the money that's being sought is coming from stabilization. That money does not exist next year. It's got to appear from somewhere. The only sources for that money, because this money was given to the schools, is from an additional appropriation, is additional taxation, or transferring from another department. And frankly, that's what should happen now. We should have a transfer from another department that has less needs than the Health Department. I can't support raiding our stabilization. That's going to affect our bond rating for mismanagement of the department.
Counselor Gilmore?
So, all of that, for what it's worth, we still need to fund our health inspectors. Regardless of what got us in this position in the first place, it's our responsibility to our town. And I don't know if anyone else has been reading their emails, but everybody is calling for blood. They want us to do this, and they need us to do this. And if we don't walk out of here funding this department, I, I don't, the level of embarrassment that I feel every day when I work down at UMass Amherst and people ask me, "What the, what is going on with the Greenfield City Council?" It is truly embarrassing. This, these meetings turn into circuses. People start waving around emails. They're not a part of the public record. They turn out to be completely inaccurate and erroneous. And I'm, this is why I filed that motion to reconsider. I had no idea what was going on. I didn't know if I could trust the information. I couldn't even read it. It was being read to me, and I still haven't seen it. And I just want everybody to recognize that if we don't vote for this, we all, if you don't vote for this, you just need to resign, because you are not taking care of the city.
All right.
I think many mistakes have been made with relation to the Health Department. And I'm willing to admit that a certain amount of mismanagement from the executive was part of that. I also recall at the budget meeting this year that accusations were levied against some of our health inspectors by members of the council. And I thought at the time that that was irresponsible, and I recall objecting to it. I believe it's very important that we respect the work of our town employees. So the council, I think, does not bear full responsibility for the crisis that we are in, but it does bear some responsibility. I'm all in favor of doing what we need to do to begin rebuilding this department. Rebuilding this department is a process that will take many years after the institutional knowledge that we've lost. And I would encourage all of my fellow counselors to vote as well to begin that process.
Counselor Alice?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to state that we had a problem with the Health Department. I, I believe that the money shouldn't come from stabilization, but if it does, it does. I tried to solve, I tried to issue or offer a solution to the funding problem. That solution came directly from a financial report that I received from Town Hall the day before the meeting. Okay? So the information that I was working off of was incorrect information provided to me. So we can talk about, you know, that I had some email, which I did have, which was provided to me, which I did send to the clerk. So if you haven't received that, the clerk does have all of that information. I sent it a couple of days later. The fact that, that the report showed money in an account that apparently was not there is troubling. And the fact that when we go to make decisions and we go to make appropriations, we should have correct information. And when, who, why that information wasn't correct is not the issue. The issue is, I will defend myself in using information that I believe to be correct, because I was told it was correct. So if, if, if there's, if there's anyone on the council that feels that, that I was at fault for using that information, well, then my apologies. But that information was provided to me, and was, I was told that that information would be correct. It's information that we are supposed to get on a quarterly basis, which we still do not. We have to ask for it. And it's information that we are entitled to. So I make no apologies for using information that was incorrect. The apology that I make is that the information was, was, was used, and it should have been correct, and it wasn't. So I, I, I will, I will, if, if we're, if we're using information and it's not correct, how are we supposed to do our job? We have to rely on the fact that the information is correct. So I was trying to issue a solution, or offer a solution, and if the information was incorrect, which it was, that, I'm sorry about that.
Vice President Ricketts?
Okay, let's, just imagine it's December 19. Let's look at the information and the figures that are in front of us, and let's make a decision. I don't want to walk down memory lane. I don't want to hear apologies from anyone. If something happened in the past, it happened in the past. We need health directors. We need to do this today. I am equally embarrassed about this issue, and I don't think it bodes well for us to have headlines that screams out that we don't have this, and that our restaurants aren't being checked. We just had this big conversation about economic, and how we want this to all grow and grow. How is it going to grow when we have a conversation one minute about this, and then the next minute about can you trust the restaurants? So let's talk about today. I don't want to talk about our last meeting. I don't want to talk about five years ago, six years ago. We have information in front of us. Let's look at this information. Let's get this vote done tonight, people. Let's just do the right thing.
Counselor Stempel?
I just want to make a point, too. So the mayor was talking a lot about revenue drivers, and a town isn't inter, we're, it's not segmented pieces. The town is an ecosystem, and every piece dwells on the other piece. And so talking about revenue centers, I'm sure Steve Adam can talk to us about how much revenue we've lost with, with the downfall of this department. But we need to support this in order to support the library, or, or a fire station, or any future growth to Greenfield. This is what's going to help us increase our tax base. So if we're going to use stabilization to do it, guess what? We're in a crisis. That's what stabilization accounts are for. I was all for learning more about the other approach that was presented for other counselors of the transferring of funds between departments. So I actually asked Director, forgive me, Gilmore? Gilman. I was like, Gilmore? That doesn't sound right. And so I actually reached out to Director Gilman about that, and she said, point blank, she's like, ah, she's like, "I wouldn't do that. It's bad budgeting practice. It's poor practice to budget that way, cutting in order to transfer between departments." And so, you know, I was willing to listen to hear it. And so what we also said is when we make budget cuts, right, the last two budget cycles, we come forth with all these budget cuts, and we say, "If you need it, come to us, and we'll give it to you." They're asking, and they have been asking, and it's time to give it to them.
Counselor Mayo? Counselor Mayo?
I'd like to call a question.
Is there a second? This is a non-debatable motion. All in favor of calling the question, please raise your hand. I think it passes, yeah. All right. Yeah, it passes. I don't see anything buddy without there. Okay, so the motion is on the floor for, for the sum of $28,330 to be appropriated, and it's going to be a roll call vote. Clerk will call the roll. It, this requires a nine. Two-thirds vote.
Counselor Sun?
Yes.
Counselor Loebek?
Yes.
Counselor Alice?
Thank you.
Counselor Pyfrum?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Lenovich?
Yes.
Counselor Mass?
No.
Vice President Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel?
Yes, yes.
Motion passes. Counselor Stempel? It's like we're in the House of Commons. Page 28, sale of town on land.
It's already been a long day. The town council, upon recommendation of the mayor, in accordance, and I also, I want to apologize. That was unprofessional of me, but it's just been a long day. The town council, upon recommendation of the mayor, in accordance...
in accordance with MGL Chapter 44, Article 63, ordered that $25,000 be appropriated from Fund 1610, sale of town-owned land to provide matching funds for a grant for Just Roots. Current fund balance, $98,101.
Motion's been made and seconded. Report from committee?
The committee's recommendation was a unanimous positive vote.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, this is just a majority vote. All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Councilor Stempel?
I'm so excited for Just Roots. Okay. The Town Council, upon recommendation of the mayor, ordered that the following sums be appropriated from the contractual stabilization fund to fund retroactive provisions of contract agreements. SSEA, up to $40,000. Clerical, up to $26,000. Contractual stabilization balance, $196,100.
Motion's been made and seconded. Report from committee?
The report from committee was also a unanimous positive recommendation. And I also want to thank the Clerk's Office and Financial Department for putting in the balances of the funds for us here because that's been a request for a while, and I really appreciate that being there. Thank you.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Councilor Stempel?
Yay, contracts. Whew, this one's... I'm going to take my jacket off this. The Town Council moved that it be ordered, upon recommendation of the mayor, that the sum of $19,541,296 be appropriated for the construction of a new public library. And to meet said appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is hereby authorized to borrow said sum of $19,541,296 pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, Article 3, or any other enabling statute. And the mayor is hereby authorized to apply for a contract for accept and expend any federal and/or state grants available for this project to be used to reduce the within appropriation. And further, the mayor is authorized to take any action necessary to carry out the intent and purpose of these projects.
Motion's been made and seconded. Report from committee?
Because we knew that there would be so much conversation and discussion and questions asked at full council, we actually voted to take no action abstained.
Okay, very good. And so, obviously, this is probably the biggest question of the night. We are going to hold to the five-minute rule, but I hope that every counselor feels... Feels open to speak their mind on this. And it would be good because that everybody get a chance to speak because I know that folks in the audience have been very eager to hear from their town councilors on where they stand on this issue. So, we'll start calling on people. Councilor Dolan, I see your hand up first.
I just wanted to open the conversation by recognizing the public support for this project. And part of that is recognizing the folks in this room. So, thank you so much for coming out. Yes, and also listening at home. Counselor Stempel reminded me. Just to go through some of the numbers, we had about 1,300 signatures on the petition for this. We have all collected signatures in Greenfield. That's part of this job. And I think we can all attest how difficult that is. That number represents more than 10% of our registered voters. And that is a phenomenal sum of signatures. Hundreds of hours of work. And I know I don't interpret that as meaning only 10% of the population supports it, but rather, those 10% were the folks that were able to actually put pen to paper. More numbers. I know there was an independent poll done that said 75% of the population, three out of four residents, were in support of this project and that 68% were willing to accept a tax increase for the sake of this project. That is an enormous amount of support. It's also been calculated that the emails and phone calls in support of this project have been coming in at a rate of 25 to 1. So, for me, these numbers add up to a clear will of the people. And I think that it's important that this body accepts that will. I think it's incumbent upon us to vote yes for this project out of respect for the voters and citizens of this community. I would encourage... I plan to vote yes, and I would encourage all of my fellow councilors to do the same.
Councilor Mayo?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to come at this from a slightly different angle. As I sit on the Commission for Disability Access, and I took part in... This wasn't part of the committee, but as part of the committee, I took part in what was called the Wheelchair Challenge a couple of weeks ago. And four councilors basically took the challenge. There was wheelchairs provided to us. And we basically were given the order to start from the parking lot, the nearest parking space or the handicapped parking space that we could find. And wheel our... Wheelchair ourselves to the back of the library, get in the library, get in the library... Get in the elevator and try to get in the bathroom and try to get... Move about in the library as if you were in a wheelchair, and that was your only option. Having been a wheelchair... In a wheelchair for... After several operations, I knew how to operate a wheelchair, so... But I did not anticipate the steep grade in the back of that building. And at one time, I was struggling. That was on the way up. On the way down, I got a free ride. Just let go of the wheel. But getting in the elevator was... I had to back up, and I shaved both knuckles on both hands on the doors because the doors kept closing. I tried to get into the bathroom. I could not get into the bathroom because the angle... There was a little bit of an angle in the back end of that building, and I couldn't get into the bathroom because the door kept swinging back and hitting my wheelchair back and pushing me back. So, this is important for people with disabilities and for anybody but with adaptive equipment that needs to... That would like to use the library and cannot. It's something that was built over 200 years ago. People back then with wheelchairs or with handicaps were basically not in the public eye. They... Times are changing. They need to be in the public eye. It's their library. It's our library. It should be... We should get a new library. Numbers don't lie. Thank you.
Counselor Pyfram?
Yes. Back in the day, when a lot of homeowners, there were two adults or three adults in the home that could afford, you know, the taxes and more for their families and stuff. Nowadays, we see people not being able to afford higher taxes, barely putting food on their table while they're working. We have homes that are crushed with, you know, separation, divorce, death. Families are trying to crunch into single-family homes now, sometimes on one income. We talk about homeless in this town. It's a crisis. It is a crisis. We're talking about affordable housing in this town. It is a crisis. I am not ready to vote this vote tonight. I am, you know, looking out for the little man, the little taxpayer with barely enough to survive. So, tonight will be no for me.
Is anybody else who hasn't spoken? Counselor Wheeler?
All right. I'll have a lot to say, but I'll do it in segments. I'll start a little off-topic, so bear with me. Three years ago, I bought a used car. It had 100,000 miles on it. I always buy used cars, and then I run them into the ground until there's nothing left because I think that, you know, otherwise they're just going to go to waste. I bought this car for $4,000. Three years later, I've put $12,000 into that total. I should have just bought a new car. You see where I'm going with this? If we turn this grant down, what's going to happen? Well, we might get sued and have blood on our hands because this... I also took that wheelchair challenge, and it's really hard to even get in that library, let alone use it, let alone think about using the bathroom. We'll spend, as Mr. Palata and his colleagues said, probably about the same amount of money for pretty much what we have now. The same old library, the same old fire station. We're going to... We'd be investing a lot of money. And where would it get us? It would just get us the same old used car, which, I mean, I fixed it up. It looks okay. It's not out there because I got a ride. But... You see where I'm going? If I bought a new car, I probably would have brought it, right? I would have driven it myself.
Counselor Stempel?
So, I graduated in 2005 from Greenfield High School. I was the only Greenfield class that never saw the middle school. We went sixth grade at the elementary schools and seventh and eighth at the old high school. How cool would it have been to go here? But that's because the middle school project was a fiasco. My mother worked on that project. I can't even... I won't even get into the things that she saw on that job site. We learned our lesson with the middle school. And frankly, I renovate houses myself. It's a lot more expensive to renovate a 1900s home than it is to just build a new one. But I like to build old houses or rebuild old houses, so that's my problem, not yours. The mayor talked about revenue centers. The figures for the library as they stand now don't account for the future of Greenfield and the continued growth that can and will happen in our town between now and 2025. I hope I'm among my colleagues and all of you here tonight. I have a bigger vision for Greenfield. I have a bigger vision for Greenfield than retail stores. That's certainly not my focus. I have a vision for Greenfield where it's a growing, thriving community that people want to be a part of. And frankly, we already are. I see a Greenfield that attracts businesses and developers because our quality of life here is high. We invest in our town, and we're heading in the right direction, which we are. We can't play small when there's opportunity to play big. I'm willing to spend $71 a year for a new library. I envision a town where entrepreneurs, which we already do have. We have entrepreneurs sitting right here at this table. And we're a town that supports that. This library is more than just books, and I learned that along the way. This library means a lot more. It's not just meeting space, which can be found in other buildings. It's library meeting space, which brings me back to being in college at the Snell Library at Northeastern University, where there was adequate, open, free meeting space where me and my classmates would meet and plan to start businesses or nonprofits and do other work in the Boston community. It's not the GCC Library because, as she stated on Thursday, that's an academic library. That's not a library filled with programming for teens, tweens, adults, and the community at large. It's taken me a while to come on the yes side. And I did my homework. I did the math. I did my research. I got emotional on Thursday just hearing about the plans for the library because it matched my vision for Greenfield. Why I sit behind here and not over where you are is because of this vision that keeps me up at night, that makes me emotional when I think of walking around downtown on a Friday night because there's a Christmas festival or holiday, sorry. A holiday festival and an artisans market and the local antique bank. I believe in Greenfield, and I think everybody who sits with me, my colleagues, we all believe in Greenfield. We might just believe in Greenfield in a different way. But I urge you to think about not the Greenfield of today and that $71. Think about the Greenfield of 10 years from now, five years from now, and the work that we can do together to lower that $71 with increased and new revenue for the town. I don't want to talk about cutting, not taking advantage of grants. I don't want to talk about less. I want to talk about making the pie bigger. And I can only do it with all of you by my side. And this library, we're spending to get something bigger. And that's where I stand from. And just a quick note. Never mind. I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Stempel. Counselor Sun?
When I buy a car, I make sure I got the money to pay for it. No matter what it is, I see my son. He buys some junk cars like you do. And he pays for it. In the end, he doesn't have the money. Now, if I'm going to pay for a library, a house, or anything, my household, I barely get by. And the $2,000 I get for the Town Council, that goes to bill. And I live day to day. And the thing is, my whole family lives the same. They're in a low-income budget. Both my father-in-law and I are disabled veterans. It's lucky I'm alive now. But because I'm alive, I chose to work for the people in Greenfield. I've lived in Greenfield 70 years with a road, you know, on and off, with 21 years going around the world. And I've seen different parts of the world that have libraries like this. And they're really... And they got people in wheelchairs and stuff like that. But they go and get there. They want to read a book, no matter what, they're disabled or not. They go in and get there. And some of the inclines and elevators are a lot smaller than this one here because they can't afford it. Now, maybe if I saw some people with big money willing to put in this before we even voted, which I didn't see. I see the ordinary people here that some of them just earn a little bit more than I do. But none of the big-money people are willing to step up and come out before the vote is being taken tonight. So, how can I... How can I be willing to say yes when there's nothing here to say? So, I'm voting no.
Counselor Gilmore?
Put a parliamentary procedure.
So, we're a council. We took a vote, and it passed for a code of conduct on civility. And so, that means we respect everyone when you speak to us. And so, when it's our turn to speak, we just want the same respect. So, just try to hold it in, whether you're angry, whatever. Please, we must be civil because we're going to grocery shop tomorrow. We're going to be in the movies together. We're going to go out to dinner. We're going to see each other. Let's keep it simple. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Gilmore?
I would like to table this motion and see... I believe that we can do some fundraising. In the last couple of days, I've received emails. I know someone said there was $50,000 that was raised. I know someone said there was $50,000 that was raised. I know I've personally been told about $40,000, and I know that there are other people out there who are willing to do this. If that's a big concern, I'm willing to wait a little while to see how much fundraising can happen before then. And I would say to those of you who are disappointed by what you're hearing from your counselors, this is what election season is for, and there's a big one coming up this year.
All right. Was that a motion to table, Counselor Gilmore? Is there a second? Motion to table has been made, and it's been seconded. This is a non-debatable motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Could we do a roll call, please?
Counselor Sun. Counselor Loebek. Counselor Alice. Counselor Pyfram. Counselor Dolan.
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore.
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler.
Yes.
Counselor Mayo.
Yes.
Counselor Lenovich.
No.
Counselor Mass. Vice President Ricketts.
Hey, do you want to come back to you?
I can come back to you.
You can come back.
Yep. Come back tomorrow.
Counselor Stempel.
What are we doing? What's gonna change?
Say yes.
Yes.
Say yes.
Vice President Ricketts.
Madam Clerk, I'd like to change my vote to no.
Do you yes?
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes.
Vice President Ricketts?
Yes.
Vice President's yes.
Counselor Stempel.
Actually, I'm gonna call a five-minute break right now, because people are getting up to leave. We have a couple other things to do, so I'm gonna adjourn for five minutes. Yep, we're back in session. The town council, upon recommendation of the mayor, ordered that the council authorizes the payment, this sounds weird, ordered that the council authorizes the payment FY18 bills for $1,546.82 from the FY19 Energy Department budget. Ever source, ever source $263.14, ever source $1,283.68.
Second, move to table.
It's been seconded and moved to table. We need 12 votes, there's not enough people here, so it's, so the table is seconded. All in favor?
No.
All in favor to table?
Aye.
Okay, tabling, it is. Counselor Stempel?
It's gonna be, anyway.
Actually, I believe this is Counselor Dolan's or Vice President Ricketts. Forty-five. Actually, our clerk proposed. Yes, Counselor Alice, will you please read?
Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield Town Council amend the code of the town of Greenfield that's written in the strike through attached here to Chapter 56 stipend for school board members and town councilors, Section 56-20 reduction in stipend for absences by deleting the word fiscal and inserting in its place calendar and further amends the index of the code and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it can be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the town of Greenfield. Do I need to read the whole thing?
Second.
No. Motion's been made and seconded. There'd be no report from committees, but this was just cleanup language on the stipends and the, when we get the stipends, because the old language was still in there from when the town council used to have elections in June. Is there any questions or discussion? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the motion carries.
Page 46. The town council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield Town Council accepts Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40U, as attached Exhibit A.
Second.
Sorry.
Good.
Motion's been made and seconded. Report from committee?
This was a unanimous positive recommendation from committee. This will further ease the inspection department to be able to collect on fines and earn revenue.
Counselor Alice?
Yeah, this was, this was suggested a year ago to look into approving this. So, I'm glad it's finally come to us after that year. Essentially, what it does is it allows the town to attach the fines that are assessed after a hearing with a hearing officer to the tax bills as a lien. So, when the property is to be sold, the new owner has to pay that prior to them being able to record that sale. It also provides for the ability of the inspections Department to not have to deal as much with the court hearings, et cetera, because it's a hearings officer, and that hearings officer is provided for by the town. So, in essence, and in hopes that that hearing officer is in the same location for a shorter period of time within the town, so that they're not taking as much time having to be in court So, I'm for it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. This will be Vice President Ricketts.
The town council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield Town Council pursuant to Charter Section 16-14A accepts the following appointment by the mayor to the Board of Assessors, Kimberly McDonald Mew as acting chief assessor for indefinite term.
Second.
Unanimous positive?
Is there any discussion? Counselor Ricketts, I'm wondering if you will accept this as a friendly amendment, having come from committee. I know the clerk's office drafted this. The mayor's statement to us indicates that she will be acting as chief assessor. That language mirrors directly what the charter says. However, all chief assessors are acting chief assessor insofar as they serve an indefinite period of time. They're all acting until they're recalled, and I believe that Ms. McDonald has earned the right to be called the chief assessor, and the acting title should be removed. And I don't believe the mayor asked for it. I would ask that we remove the word acting from the motion, if you have no objection.
I just checked in with Mark Smith, so I have, that's fine. We got it like that.
E.S.T. Any other discussion? Counselor Alice?
I, my discussion is more broad. I think that she is the right choice for this, as she's gone to this, to get the certifications and et cetera. My problem is, it's not a problem, because it's a great thing for her. She will be going out of maternity leave. What are we gonna, she's the only one in the office, so I'm wondering if we could get a plan as to what we're gonna do for the three months that she's on maternity leave to take care of her newborn baby. So, if, not right now, but in general, I'm hoping that we can have something come back to us as to what the plan's gonna be for people who are gonna be going in to see the assessor for abatements and such, which are due and, to be filed by January. So, thank you.
Mark Smith, you're shaking your head, you're gonna get that to the clerk's office for, thank you. Sorry, you probably want to say that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Counselor Alice, could you read page 49?
I know what this is, okay. Move that it be ordered upon recommendation of the mayor and in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws to amend Order Number FY19-016 to exclude the 2017 retirement plan audit from the scope of the Bloom Shapiro outside audit. Melanson Heath will complete the retirement plan audit for the calendar year ending 2017.
Is there a second? Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Counselor Alice, we're on this together, so you can explain it.
Yeah, so President Reno and I, at President Reno's request, are serving on a de facto audit committee, which we will meet with the auditors and do all of the things that the council is tasked with doing in the charter. Basically, when we met for the first meeting, it was stated that the retirement audit needed to be done by December 31st, that Melanson Heath was 90% done, and that that audit is actually paid for from the retirement board, much like the, never mind, we're coming up with that next. So, actually, I'll just say it now. All three of these audits that we are voting on tonight to be done by Melanson Heath are being paid for out of those particular areas of the budget. So, Franklin Tech is paying for theirs, the retirement board pays for theirs, and the housing authority pays for theirs. We just, we, the town, just facilitate that to happen for the federal reporting and auditing. So, we, at the committee level, decided to let Melanson Heath finish those three audits, and that the city audit will be done by the Bloom Shapiro.
Comments, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Counselor Alice, page 50.
Move that it be ordered, the town council amend Order Number FY16-145 by deleting the word wireless to allow the schools to purchase public address system.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Report from committee? There was none?
Oh.
Didn't go to Ways and Means. Counselor Stempel is gone.
Oh, I didn't realize why I was reading it, but I was just following orders. We did not actually talk about this at Ways and Means, but it's been very clear that this has been bantered around back and forth for quite some time, and that it's, it is what it is.
Yep.
They think, they think wired is better, and we'll defer to that, in my opinion.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. So, sure, Vice President Ricketts will read the first reading.
Madam President, under old business?
First presentation and petitions of similar papers.
Wait, first reading?
Yeah, we're not, I skipped.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, I skipped all the way. Vice President Ricketts is gonna read it, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't skipping over it.
No, no. Does anybody want to do report of committees? No? No? Okay. Is there any unfinished business? Counselor Mass?
No, old business.
Okay. Old business. Counselor Mass, unfinished business.
Sorry.
Which one is, they're kind of the same. No.
I have a little unfinished.
Okay.
While I understand that we tabled the motion tonight, I was just, I just wanted to say that I had wanted to use my five minutes to at least speak, and I'm a little upset that I didn't get to do that, and I just wanted to say that if we're gonna table something in the future, while I understand we should table it as soon as we can, so that we don't waste time, that was pretty darn, that's okay, I'm not blaming anybody, but I just wanted to say that I hope in the future, if everyone's spoken already, table it, but I really had stuff that I wanted to say. So, I, in the future, if we could think about that before we call a question or we table something, I would, I would appreciate it as a fellow counselor. So, thank you very much for hearing me.
Oh, thank you. Is this Vice President, okay.
This is just a follow-up to Counselor Alice. In a perfect world, it would work, but that has been done at council meetings so much. I mean, I remember it happening this summer as well. It's gone on a lot, so I get it, I feel it, but it's whatever the council actually wants by voting. But I feel you, I had, I had five minutes to say too, so.
Okay, old business. Counselor Mass?
I don't know if this is quite the appropriate location, but I just want to raise, I haven't seen any correspondence about our organizational meeting in January, and we are required to have one. I'm not saying that things would change or anything like that, but I think we are mandated to have an organizational meeting in January. I think it's mandated to be January 2nd. I think the dean of the council chairs that meeting, which I believe is Counselor Alice, but I just wanted to find out whether or not we would be getting some communication about the location of that meeting.
Yes, we definitely will. That'll be forthcoming, probably in the next couple days. Yeah, yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, so thanks for bringing it up. New business. Counselor Pyfram?
Yeah, I just have a comment. I didn't want to let this go, but I want to remind fellow counselors. First of all, I want to thank Counselor Ricketts for addressing the community after receiving, you know, the votes from the council to keep everybody at bay with their comments. Thank you very much. But I also want to remind fellow counselors, your behavior and your comments were very rude and unnecessary toward the rest of us. We're up here as a whole, working together, and it doesn't help that you lash out at your fellow counselors and to the community. There is voting coming up in November. People have the choice, but to behave inappropriately to the rest of us was uncalled for, unnecessary.
Before we move on to the first reading, does anybody have anything else that they wish to say? So, Vice President Ricketts?
Yes.
First reading?
The Greenfield Town Council, upon recommendation of the mayor Martin, approves the payment of prior year invoice for next request company in the amount of $4,750 to be paid from FY19 Greenfield Technology Budget. The town council, upon recommendation of the mayor, ordered that the following sums be appropriated from the contractual stabilization fund to fund retroactive provisions of contract agreement, fire up to $27,000, dispatch up to $13,000. For the town council, upon recommendation of the mayor, ordered that up to $109,340 be appropriated from the general stabilization fund for wisdom way road design.
Are there any motions for reconsideration? Is there a motion to adjourn? The motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Opposed, abstained, please, everybody have a nice holiday.
All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need when you need it close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield, call them at 774-3191, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, The Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community New Fortune Chinese Restaurant on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield, visit them online at newfortunema.com, call them at 772-0838, and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com, call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield, you can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave, call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solastoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.